Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the City Greenwood City Council order this Monday, November the 2nd, 2015 approximately 7:05 PM. Ms. Derry, would you call real quick?
I'm Ms. Brown.
Here.
Officer Johnson.
Here.
Ralph Powell.
Here.
Daniel.
Here.
Mr. Derry.
Here.
Mr. Derry.
There's a form.
Thank you. If you would please rise and join me with our pledge of allegiance and our prayer. Prayer will be led tonight by Richard McKitty, Greenwood Line, and our pledge of allegiance by Chief Will Dawson. Mrs. Hurry.
Join me in prayer, please. Our heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day, this beautiful time of year that you've given us. And thank you, Lord, for this community that you've allowed us to live in, and for the freedoms that we experience here in this country. I thank you to be with this governing body tonight, be with them as they conduct business that affects our citizens here, help them to make their decisions wisely, and as we pray always, we do this in your name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May you see them? This time I'll ask for approval, the council minutes for the October 5th, 2015 council meeting.
I'll make that motion, Ms. Claire.
Take it.
Motion and a second to approve the amendments.
Ms. Brown.
Yes.
Officer Johnson.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Mr. Derry.
Yes.
Thank you. This time, we will interrupt the normal agenda a little bit and have a bid opening. Please, Mr. Butler.
Mayor Kinslow, councilman, Ms. Derry, it's a pleasure to be here in South City Greenwood once again. We're here to, I'm here to not open bids on the Murray River Waterline improvements project. The first bid is from Goodwin and Goodwin and Quilbray. This company, by bid bond, an amount of 5% of the total bid. There were no addends. The Goodwin and Goodwin has issued a bid price in the amount of $43,100 and zero cents. Forty-three thousand, one hundred dollars and zero cents. The second and last bid is from Franklin Construction. Their bid is a company by bid bond, an amount of 5% of the total bid. Again, there were no addends. Franklin Construction has issued a bid price in the amount of $25,230 and zero cents. Twenty-five thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars and zero cents. We will prepare a certificat to that and give a letter of recommendation to the city.
Thank you, Ms. Short.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move into the normal report this month. We have, this time, we have recognitions and acknowledgements, and we have some very important folks in the family, we always do, they're all very important. But we do have some special guests tonight. It has come to my attention, and it's been a while, but it has come to my attention that we have a hero amongst us this evening, and if you're wondering if it's you, you probably should wonder, if you ever wondered. This young man, I know for a fact, was raised in a home that's all about being heroes, not intentionally maybe, or just the way, I think, he's trained and brought up in his home, but he did a wonderful thing, a very loving thing, and something that you might think most kids would do, but to have the thought to do it and the way to do it, the way he handled it, I think was very impressive, and so we want to honor Mr. Joseph Ryan this evening. Mr. Joseph Ryan coming up front, I'd like to present him with a little something. Are you, sir? Good. This young man, can you tell, can you tell everybody what you did, or what this is about tonight? Do you know?
My mommy was hurt, I came in here and I helped my mom.
His mommy was hurt, and he came in and he helped his mom. And that's, that's about it in a nutshell, because he made a phone call, got some help there in time and manner, and took care of business like a big man, right? This guy's awesome. I know him personally, and again, this is Chief Sturt Ryan's son. So, we're going to get a picture of just he and I a little bit. Can I read that to you? Is that okay? You can probably read it better than I can. This is City Greenwood Certificate of Honor awarded to Joseph Ryan in recognition of an exceptional act of courage during an emergency situation. The second day of November, 2015, Martha official sealed the city in Greenwood. I signed it, and our partner signed it. Okay? So congratulations, that's awesome. Thank you, my dear, your mom up here, and brother, and grandma and granddad. Come on up, come on up for a picture. Come on up. You guys had a little something to do with the racing. Chief, you can say that. One more time. Thanks, my mom killed that one time, and I ran outside and played football. Oh, okay. I can, is that what she said?
Yeah.
I was informed that it's not a hip-to-bodulation, that she did go on to the hospital too. You've done a great job. Mr. Derry, too. I didn't realize his uncle was here who received the phone call. That's cool. Okay. Now, we have another young man here. Mrs. Hurry. For the last two or three, I think, three months now, I've tried to honor some folks in town or the city, and this is the Mayor's Choice Award for someone that takes a building in Greenwood, Arkansas, that doesn't look all that great, and makes it look great, and does something, does something good with it. So, it doesn't have to be necessarily downtown, it's within the city limits. This one happens to be downtown, on Main Street, and he's known by several names, actually only two, it's Roman Routh, and I know for a fact, it's Routh, right?
Right, Doug, good job.
Doctor Evan Routh, if you would step forward, please. I think he just answered, because he is a doctor, by the way, so he'll answer. 2015 Mayor's Choice Award Community Enhancement Award, Ralph Powell, presented by City Greenwood, Mayor Doug Kinslow, made a good-looking building even better. He did a good job, appreciate it. Evan had a chance to go on to play professional baseball, but had a pretty good excuse, because I was the coach himself.
Thanks, everyone.
Okay, we have another special guest. I don't know if it worked for you, but we have a young lady here tonight that is lead running for judge, I'm not sure. Circuit?
Circuit.
Circuit Judge, yeah, no, no, right. Ms. Shannon Black is here with us tonight. You'd like to step forward?
I'm not good at talking with my back people, is it?
Turn around, do whatever you want to do, your board is yours.
Thank you. My name is Shannon Black, I met most of you when you came in. I'm running for Sebastian County Circuit Judge, Division III. Judge Spears is retiring. I have many friends in this room, and I would love to have your support. The position is countywide, and if there's ever anything I can do for any of you, please feel free to contact me. Thank you.
Thank you.
I practiced with her more years than I'd like to say. And she's very good at what she does, and she would make a good judge. I would recommend her.
Thank you.
It's good to see you.
You, too.
All right. Does anybody else here think they deserve a award? All right, we'll get right into the committee reports. Here's our special guy for the girls' club, Mr. Sinead.
Mr. Shaw, my mayor and councilman. We have kicked off basketball season. Actually, we've done it earlier this year and before, and we're going to start games actually beginning of November, beginning of December. Want to get the kids more games, and we're trying to see how it works, since we actually had signups a month earlier, and we knew soccer was going on, football was going on and everything. I'm proud to say, this is the first year since I've been here, we've got over 400 basketball cheerleaders there. We're trying to figure out how it's going to play out, and I looked at the schedule, it is unreal. This is the first year in any sport that we've had, that we had an increase in every grade size. So, we really, really felt lucky about that. Girls' lawyers are way up, boys slumming, fifth and sixth grade, boys, I think we have seven teens, eight to ten kids on there, had a great turnout, the volunteer coaches, I still need three tomorrow at 6:00, I'll start practicing. Anybody want to volunteer, let me know. Our after-school program is going good, we just submitted our request for Boys and Girls Club OJP grant. We didn't make it this last year, they went off our community index, which I explained to y'all. This year, that is not in the criteria coming up. So hopefully, we think we got a really good shot at getting it, and that'll help us get back on our feet. We're still trying to recover from the loss money from the state. It was in a paper article this last week, the Fish Thing Act. They cut everybody, and they basically gave the club 4,000. I got an email at the grid line today saying, hey, submit your reimbursements on the 5th of this month. We know you didn't get your reimbursement last month, there's some problems with the contract writing now, since they re-did it in August, so hopefully we'll get some of that money coming soon. Besides that, we're kicking and scratching and going along good. We had picked on the table donations today, so that was up and running, and the kids really enjoyed it, and we appreciate it. That was donated by Mrs. Hobbs from Earth Baptist, and we really appreciate that. So, does anybody have any questions, or anything? We appreciate y'all.
More kids, less money. Thank you all for having me. Thank you, Kim, appreciate what you do out there. Lisa Moore is here tonight? No. I'm sorry, okay. Parks Commission, oh, Zinn. Go ahead.
I'm used to sitting here.
Welcome.
I want to report on our October meetings, that we just added Parks Commission. Two things, one, we voted to renew two of our members for three-year terms, and that would be myself and Joel Delstee, who we're going to remit. We also voted on officers for one-year terms, and I was elected for chairman, and Peggy Hattie was elected vice-chairman. That's pretty much all I have to report tonight. I would like your permission to turn this over to Richard, to give you a report on my project. I think you can much better do that than I can at this point. And, and for future meetings, if you, if you approve of it, I think Richard would do a better job of making these presentations, unless there's something that we need to ask for your permission on, request for this, if that's all right, if you know.
We're good.
So, unless you have some questions?
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Do I get a vote? All right, from the Parks Commission, I'm giving up, Ed, and all of our projects real quick. Amphitheater, we're just waiting to get a color match on the concrete. Michael will be going up there tomorrow to get confirmation, think we have it, and once that's approved, accepted by the architect, then they'll be ready to start pouring on that. That project will definitely be wrapped up this month. Lock and Bell Tower, day after tomorrow, Wednesday, 8:00 AM. Historic day, the bell will go back into the top of the tower, now has a fabricated steel beam instead of the old rotted wood beams, and I was up today at the manufacturer, we got all that fitted and confirmed, and it's all good and ready to go. Be a lot of media here, since this is going to be a pretty significant event for the city. Mechanism, got word from our bird company up in Ohio, that mechanism is complete now, and they're ready to start shipping there. It's not going to have to be windy for rainship, and that'll be on hand. We already purchased our LED lighting that will illuminate the inside of the clock room, and give illumination for all the faces. We finished our electrical service last week, and the cracks have been repaired, they're all epoxy, drilled out, epoxy ground down, and then the entire tower, the power wash and see. Hey, you've got probably some of the rubber dent brands that goes on the top of the roof, and that'll keep the wire out of that structure from drilling now. Next year, we'll be going to the school, and working on a frame, steel frame and a metal roof, go on that, and that'll finish that covering. Caboose details have started, detailing has started, we're painting some additional accent color, white stripes and things on that. Later this week, we hope for eventually we'll get the big decal put on that. Lee Gibson is installing glass, who's been there all day today, so now, with that caboose going by, it's got brand new glass, windows and all that, it's like, like it's off glass. North Main Trail Extension, our survey is completed on that, we're just waiting for the easel to be written up, and we're ready to start another beat, continuing on from where it left off, the top of the hill on Main Street, and continue on down the power line and connect back up with the main trail and artery. City Lake Boat Ramp and Parking Lot, we're waiting for word from Game and Fish, they're still sure that we're going to be funded completely for that project, we've given them all of our estimates, and they're happy with that, but they're waiting for Little Rock to decide exactly where we fall in their list with their boat fuel tax money, or their... Sand House Framing, that's a Shane Powell Eagle Scout project, well, framing was completed this weekend, and our estimate completion date on that project is 7th of December, that's the day that we use right at the end of break. Memorial Park, grounding is underway right now, we have 14, 14 stones on back order. Budget session is scheduled for tomorrow with Parks Commission, let's now go over our long-range plan and budget for next year, and our Halloween Trail, that Plucks City School and World Businesses were involved in, we consider to be a neat success this year, we had, we've not been over 2,000 people that walk the trail. The tower, is it, what's the EPA premium function? I'm telling everybody in the year. Remember, does that just depend on weather? In reality, probably close to the end of the month, this month, in a year.
Thank you, Richard. A lot of good work going on, appreciate you. I lost my place. All right, Gary Grimes, Gary's not here now, Mr. Lee Webb. Lee Webb Consulting, I guess.
I feel very, I feel, medium of late. Not a lot legislatively going on down through Little Rock right now. I want to touch, but it's just, from Election Commission's point of view, I want to thank y'all for allowing us to use this site for early voting, and next Tuesday, election in this room. Election Commission will provide a billboard out here to couple of five people opening up our...
You have a bigger one than that?
Mayor asks if you have a big, big sign, and...
I have a big one.
Yeah, I've got a big one. We'll write that down, in fact, I'm going to change it as I leave, so vote tomorrow for early voting. Other than that, unless y'all have any questions, I mean, I'd sort of hear from me, that's what we'll be on that.
Nice weekend, and good night to the Game and Fish.
Come on. New record. We're winning.
Boat ramp. Kenny was just talking about. Park lot. Or the five to the ground. Yeah, definitely. They've got a big one.
I'll mention that later, and next month, I'll be straight to the state. Hopefully, we'll get a lead back close. I hope those will be very, we'll have those close next year, or next fall. We'll invite everybody to that.
Thank you, appreciate you. Michael, we have you down as the PD, you know.
Mayor Council, Mr. Danny and Derry. Just wanted to give you guys a quick update, where we're on the PD, and you guys know they've argued against the building, and everything's going well there, but we do have a few things that we need to wrap up financially. There's a few outstanding items over here on the balance for some miscellaneous fees, but the main thing is the final contractor's pay amount of $229,567. We have, we all have our closeout document paperwork, and everything seems to be in place, we've received their lease of means, and they can send surety for final payment, so we are recommending to you guys that we go ahead and approve that final amount we paid to the contractor. We are within budget on everything still, our main contingency or allowance funds are $3,564, and I think Earl has a few things IT-wise, computer-wise, that he's kind of spoken for those, for that last $3,500 or so for, but we'll be right, and the last last of the payments in March, okay? And that's all we have left on the building to get it wrapped up. We've got about, just about finished with all of our lead paperwork, the lead portion of the building, and it'll take about 30 to 60 days for US Green Building Council to review that, but we are anticipating that we will achieve our level that we were going after, and hopefully, the next level up, if everything goes well with the review, but I'm pretty sure we will receive the certification that we were after, and I'd say hope it works out. I don't really need any action from you guys, I just wanted to give you an update, because I didn't come in last month, and for us to know where we're going.
Thank you, Mike. Building still standing, or...
Still standing.
Waterways Water Commission, Mr. Ratty.
Mayor, Councilman, Ms. Derry. Mr. Andy. First question on our report. The commission met on the 26th of last month, we focused most of our attention on two items, one of the budget. And I think we're back on track of that, it was a little bit scary at first, but after meeting with Ann this week, we got to get some issues resolved there, and I think we're back on track with that, and that should be hopefully by the end of the month, we should have something that's, that's ready to go for 2016, that's what we're shooting for anyway. The second thing we focused on was the engineering for the tanks. What you've got in front of you is a document in Arkansas Health Department, Department of Health, related to, if you remember, over the last few months, I told you that we actually got denied twice because of paperwork, and so, we finally got the wording correct for the health department, they approved it, this is the letter of approval from the health department. So what happens next? Next phase would be that Hawkinsware completes all the engineering and design paperwork submitted with the application to Arkansas Natural Resources, and then it starts down its path through the bureaucratic committee process that they go through, which is going to take us probably two, three months, of them reviewing the different committees that have to look at it, and then come back, and it will be hopefully before you're trying to issue a bond. So that's kind of the process we're going to go through. If you look at the second page, along with that application that was submitted to the health department, is, is the cost of the project. We basically have a one million gallon tank, a 200,000 gallon tank, and then we have a couple generators, two generators, one for Honey Suckle and the other one for Hilltop, because as it stands right now, when we lose electricity, those two locations, Hilltop and Honey Suckle, have no water stores, so they lose their pressure, and so this would give them 24/7 pressure regardless of what happens. The rest of the city has enough water pressure coming from the water companies, they can sustain themselves for at least 24 hours, somewhat longer than that, depending on how much water we use in the time of year, but you can see the cost, we're estimating at about $2 million, a little over $2 million. We actually had anticipated about 2.5, but this may fluctuate 10 or 15% depending on, you know, what we find out through the engineering process. Today, we spent about $12,000, $15,000 on engineering. You can see on here that the engineering fees on here are quite substantial, 6.5% of the total project is $35,000, and then we have the inspection process, which is 3.5% there at the bottom, which is $6,000. So like I said, our next step is going through the process with Arkansas Natural Resource, and hopefully, after the first year, we'll get back into issue a bond. The, the next piece of paper we have is a resolution. This resolution is, is, since we don't have the bond money now, we're spending money on, on engineering, some leak costs, we're going to incur before the bond is issued, this allows us to reimburse our budget before the bond is issued, because we don't have the money, so we're taking it out of, out of operating right now, money that we set aside for this project, we're spending it, but this resolution will allow us to reimburse ourselves for that, and then fold those expenses into that bond as well. So we're, we're going to talk about that resolution, but some need an approval in there. And then the last page, we see before it's a budget, if you look at the top line where it says 2.1, not the top line, the top section there, where it talks about 2.5 for 10 years, that's where the 2.5 number came in. We're going to be a little less than that, and if you look at that Arkansas Natural Resource line, basically, we're talking about, you know, $22,000 based on 2.5, so it's going to come in a little less than that. I think Ann and I were anticipating around $19,000 for what the, what the payment is going to want to be roughly, but as we get closer to the final number, we'll, we'll have that back in front of you as well, and we'll have to do that before we issue the bond anyway, so. That's kind of where we are on the, on the project. You know, we're, we're still finalizing and waiting, I guess, for the hookup with Tractor Supply. I talked to you last month about the sewer process, we've been in contact with engineers and Walmart, we've had to make some modifications in the, in the planned execution of that line to accommodate Walmart, but I think we've gotten past that hurdle, so Bricksy is, is now working on the engineering for that, and we're still thinking this is going to come in about $75,000 to $80,000 if everything goes according to plan, and we'll come back to you to let you know exactly when we're going to start that. And then the Weir Road project that we just opened bids on, we need approval to accept the lowest bid on that, I think Tim stepped out with, with Jeremy and forgot to request that, so he asked me to go ahead and put that in front of you as well. So I need action on, on the Weir Road bid to accept the lowest bid, and also need action on the resolution to reimburse the budget from the money spent before we get the bond issued. Any questions? Go ahead and approve the lowest bidder, approve what he's asking for. Make a motion that we approve the apparent lowest bidder.
Second. And motion and second, approve of the lowest bidder.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Officer Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes. Yes. Thank you. Do we want to add the resol- do we just want to add the resolution? Let's go ahead now.
Are you comfortable with playing there?
Make a motion to pass this resolution before us regarding the reimbursement of funds.
Same case.
Motion and second, accept the resolution.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. All right, were there any questions about the tank project or any questions about the financing, money that's going to be spent? Make sure you have an opportunity to ask.
The honeysuckle tank, where is that? What's the location of that one?
It's not a tank, it's going to be a generator.
So that's just the generator, not the elevated tank?
No, it's not the elevated tank. The elevated tank's going to be out by the balewood tank, which is above the golf, on the hill, above golf course. It's going to go right beside the other one. We're going to have to purchase a small piece of land to expand our footprint up there a little bit. And then the other tank will be up there, the meeting garden tank will be up there. The, the two generators, one in honeysuckle and then one in hilltop will be there to help pull the pressure and provide them.
So the generators are here, the other tower, the other golf?
That's correct.
On the, this last page, again, we're, you know, we had a thing here that says that the Arkansas Natural Resources can't combine the, the water on a sewer. Are y'all?
That was, that was the refinance that we did three months ago. At one point in time, we talked about, instead of refinancing that, we were combining those loans into one loan. And they couldn't do that. That's why we made a refinance option. This is just another document that I kept all of those financial spreadsheets on the same page. So we've gotten past that combining those loans.
So we're still just looking at whatever depends on the two, a little over two. And that's refi- kind of still the same?
Yeah, it's going to be Arkansas Natural Resources, assuming we don't run in any kickbacks at a 50 percent and a half. And it's actually only a half percent. It turns one percent or about 10 percent, so it's only a half percent. So it's basically a free loan. You're fucking minimal. I don't know whether that half percent loan is a big deal or not. Pretty good deal. And then that's the same percentage we got on the refinance and we saved $132,000, $133,000.
Fantastic, okay.
Right. You, you think?
Steve, if you had any change of approach to landowner, whether to donate some land to that project? She's going.
Yeah, I mean, we've talked a little bit about it.
I was hoping she was still here.
She's never said so. It's, you know, even if we had purchased, it's not going to be a significant amount of money. We're only estimating somewhere around $70,000.
That plan that looked like she was going for that answer anyway. They said the bill was the last.
Well, we want, we want.
Is this an elevated tank?
This is an elevated tank.
So if it's an elevated tank, can we put a park under it?
Well, I went up there with Tim one time. I'm not sure if I'm going to go up there for a park. It's pretty grown up.
We are mirroring the, mirroring the tank that's there.
It would be a little bigger.
Same style.
It'd be a little smaller. It'd be like one of our shadow bike, as like one of his hobbies. Be good for a deer stand. Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Steve Rattler. Appreciate you. Citizens' forum. And it looks like Ms. Black was signed up or spoke to her, Mr. Kelsey, did you remark that? Anybody else that did not have a chance or know that they were needed to sign up on our citizens' forum? Agenda additions. I know three to scope with Ann real quick and then we'll get you chief. So this would be number six?
Number six is actually, actually for the street department. They have found a used asphalt laydown team that they would like to purchase. It's at the city of Van Uren and it's currently been rebuilt. Number seven is sidewalk. We need to do a resolution for $10,000 in sidewalk enhancement within the sidewalk fund. So that the street department can do the necessary sidewalk repairs throughout town to, not limited to, but to include North Main Street. And then number eight is within the police fund to increase insurance building and property. We got the insurance bill for the new police station. It was higher than what we had anticipated. They would have given us figures before the building was built. So we need to increase that by $8,000.
Thank you, Ann. I've got one. Chief, you have an addition?
Our resolution again needs to be the prior fund.
All the taken?
Yeah.
This is number nine. Any other agenda additions? Old business, there is none. We're running into new business. Police Department, clarification of ordinance 14-10.
Mayor Councilman, Mr. McCarry. Discharge of apartments and ceilings. We had a gentleman come in who was property that is right next to Westwood Schools. And he was part of practice on his land. He brought the ordinance in to the police department over to the hall. And he was staring at it through the ordinance. Now, on the hunting, hunting part of it, it shows that you can only hunt on a property that is incorporated in sea limits after last year where they was in 2014. Now, as far as part of practice, we both looked at that ordinance. He got a copy of it and as far as it's on the website. I didn't see anything there other than it says you had to have 10 acres or more, I think. Basically, it didn't say anything about to include property after 2014. So at that time, I told him that I don't believe that was their intention. It was for the property that was going to be added. But I don't see anything in black or white that would stop you according to the new ordinance. So I wanted clarification if that was the intention, if I missed something in that ordinance as far as being able to shoot in sea limits. But he has, I think he said 43 acres or, I think it was 30, 30 or 47 acres. And nothing in the part about the target practice and sea limits. I, I think this.
Do you want to see this?
I don't have the, uh.
I haven't, I don't have.
Okay.
Those are exceptions to being unlawful.
I hope shopping unlawful except for a person engaged in lawful hunting after provided thereafter. By person engaged in target practice or trap shooting only 150 yards by an act by structure on a minimum of 10 acres and shooting into an abatement sufficient to stop a bullet to clear out. So basically, I wanted to make sure that that was your intentions to allow that a lot of people target practice what they have over the 10 acres. Because he is right next to Westwood Schools and at this time, there is nothing, I don't believe in an ordinance that would stop him from doing that.
Or did you just kind of pass the law if there was any? Were you definitely come up with that?
Uh, it wasn't me. I wasn't answering that.
Everybody was here for the conversation.
I think the key is, does it say that?
Well, it doesn't say that. It doesn't say that on this part. I agree with what you read that. I mean, the way I read that is, is that you can target practice, the part about.
You just can't, huh?
Yeah, you just can't. And I remember having conversations about, we don't have this language in there, but, you know, some, some sort of inspection of the abatement. You know, and how we, I remember having some conversations to talk about, how do you define an abatement? What's sufficient abatement? And would you have the ability to go out and define that? Is this sufficient? Is it not? And if it's, if it's an abatement that met your, your police department's okay, I think that, I think that's how you define that. If you went out and this is an abatement that was, you know, in your mind, too small to stop a bullet, it's not adequate, it's not located in the right spot. You know, however the abatement is supposed to be, then you would have the ability to say, but this isn't going to work if this abatement is too low, it's positioned here, it's not sufficient for what you want to do. I think that was the gray area there, but I don't remember that. I think I said that to Charlotte or somebody. Maybe it was before. It seemed like I remember there being something that excluded. It wasn't just the annex lands, it was.
All I took away from, I took the offload from that meeting back then. I know we talked about, is it just going to be the annex land? And I don't know if we were all based on, if I was thinking hunting and target practice or, but I left that thinking that, that pretty much that ordinance is going to be null and void because obviously the annexation didn't happen.
Did we not repeal that?
I'm sure we can change whatever we want to change.
And go back to the original.
Well, we can repeal it with just one vote, correct?
We have to prepare an ordinance to repeal it.
And then you have to put it on the first, second, third reads and we have time to come in and weigh in.
Well, you're out trying to enforce all this. What, what is your recommendation?
Have you, have you had the opportunity to go and look where this guy's abatement is?
I didn't, I didn't end up saying that in that policy.
Well, but it, I mean, it does say, I mean, it's, I think there, it's not, it's not vague to me on the annex part, but it is vague on, I mean, how do we define an abatement sufficient to stop a bullet? Who's going to, who's going to say it's sufficient or not sufficient? That would be, that's our thing. Y'all, y'all are the experts in firearms. If you go out there and this is some small abatement, I think you have the right to do this to say, hey dude, you're right, but this abatement is not.
Mike, this is what I said. He's open to us taking that liability of us saying yes it is. I mean, I can say yes, it's a hill and it should stop bullets, but if it doesn't, then I approve it. Then is the city liable for?
We're seeing a situation where we might be, so.
So you want us to attempt to make some complicated amendment or you want us to repeal it?
I'm not comfortable with someone shooting a gun next to Westwood Schools for one, and that's why I certainly wanted to get clarification. I didn't know where council goes on that, if we intended to cover properties in the sea limits that were already incorporated sea limits.
Well, obviously, we didn't intend for people to be blasting way over by the school while they're on recess.
Now, he could have a perfectly good place where he's shooting that would stop bullets. But I don't, like I said, I don't know that we assume that liability of saying yes, that's, that's a good burn there and that, that'll stop bullets.
So are you wanting us to spend time and try to amend it or do you want us to repeal it?
Personally, I'm rather happy to repeal it.
So to repeal this, we're going to have to do, we'll have the ordinance prepared next month to repeal it.
Well, I guess when this is come back up again in future extensions, I mean.
I'm sure it does. Yes, and it may come up next month when Dylan finds out that we're feeling it and he wants to do that, so.
Well, I mean, how do you, how do you properly license a facility to conduct firearms supporting activity? How does this, if number five says, person engaged, law participation in facility properly licensed, conduct firearms supporting activity? How does one go about licensing there?
Dr. Johnson, that was kind of for the kids that were doing the.
Well, I understand that, but I mean, it's not, I mean.
I mean, for me, I mean, for us, we have to have a range officer there and there are certain things that we go through which will ensure our safety.
What if you took that, you've got 150 yards from an occupied structure. I mean, what if you put some 300 yards from any school, daycare, nursing home, whatever, I mean, put a list of whatever in there?
Well, that's the same thing I brought up that, unfortunately, we're a councilman and we're here, but obviously 22 can travel that distance. And then, you know, high caliber for miles, so I don't know that that solves it for me. It may.
I thought we, I thought we put a limit on type of weapon you can shoot, like a shotgun, crossbow.
I thought this, this is a rifle shotgun. It doesn't specify caliber.
As Candace said too, I guess, you know, it's all kind of coming back now. I know what Dr. Lee had said, you know, as far as, you know, having to come to the police, you know, go out and, you know, expect, you know, see whether or not it was an acceptable burn or an abatement or whatever. I remember us discussing that and then as Candace did say, that seemed like, you know, we did discuss certain things. Because you said, you know, we, you know, 22 can travel, you know, a mile. And you just got to, you know, certain things that we would allow, maybe like for trap shooting or whatever, you know, you could do that, you can carry that far.
Did we, did we have an ordinance before this, ordinance regulating firearms?
There's no shooting firearms in sea limits and cover everything down so that you can. Now, I, I mean, I'm in favor. I think there's nothing wrong with the archery hunting in sea limits. I think we even talked about, as long as they were from an elevated position. Because obviously there's deer population in deer woods that needs to be hunted to keep the population down because of health reasons for the herd. And I'm sure the official can tell you all about that. But I, you know, there's not very many cities, I don't believe, that, and someone could prove me wrong. This is just my thought, that allow discharging apartments and sea limits.
No matter what size acres they have or anything?
I would certainly go back and research and work and need to with the, you know, I mean, if they own thousands of acres, by all means, I would think they'd be able to hunt it. We're real, kind of like. That's kind of where that ordinance came from, I think we all know.
There's a couple things going on here. One, this thing was kind of bargaining, you know, before the free range circus, this whole annexation came around. We were trying to make everybody happy and then it turned into an 11th hour. Some people didn't even know they're getting annexed from the circus. So that is why some of this ordinance was put in vague in general, just to tease some government subs. So I just assume repeal, if you can shoot, you can. Now, it does say here, person engaged in target practice, trap shooting 150 yards occupied structure. I mean, I'm also from the school. I mean, is this guy on this land some kind of shotster? Is he convicted, what, I mean, what is he, you know, is he? I like thinking man, thinking guy is a decent little being, thought to shoot towards the school. So I mean, you kind of, I took that vague before.
Does the property actually butt up against those school property?
There's, there's already a state statute that says you can have a firearm within 1,000 feet of the school. That's not enough. It's, it's not enough distance.
Is this Mr. McMillan's property?
On the ice, just all the top.
Yeah, he's in the backyard.
He thinks with maybe like rifle or pistol, I would do a shot there, you know, the bird shot.
I think he's shooting a pistol into the side of the hill up there. I'm not for sure. But certainly with this school, it's just an old torn remaining kids there personally have one there, but.
You don't have 50,000 different scenarios of land and shooting and all stuff for so many, too. You're going to do it anyway. I mean, there's not many plans to do them, but I don't know. But I'm allowed or we're allowed, you know what I'm saying? Because I mean, everybody comes with a different scenario. Well, I've got ten acres and I've got this high fence put up and all this, your barn and this. And well, I've got fifty acres and I don't have no, no boundaries. I mean, you're, you're almost like you're going to cater to everybody in order to get it. Because I'm kind of like ten. It's kind of the deal that we was going after. We had some people that was in our annexation. You know, had property and they'd enjoy shooting their guns and it was kind of a, kind of that deal, so. I mean, next time. My, my, my thought is, Gene, I mean, you're out there every day and, I mean, you know, you should be in the bush. You want to and you don't. You know what I mean? So.
It was pretty clear back then. I think, I think Chief was pretty clear back then. He didn't want it, so.
So, so for me, man, I mean, if that's, if that's what, I mean, he's, he's the one that has to do it all the time and has to-
Mike, want to make this ordinance repeal it and bring it back?
I will.
So it's funny.
Well, I think in some ways it's like, uh, Daniel's saying, to me, it's not so much the acreage. It's, it's how close the yards are to either a school, church, or something like that, you know? To me, that's where you really put some stringency on it, you know what I mean? A person could have fifty acres, but they're targeted, trying to be right there on, you know, the edge of their acreage, you know, next to a school. And it's, you say, that's the be-
One mile?
Yeah, one mile or something like that. I mean, you know, it has to be a certain, pretty restrictive things. Because if you didn't technically have, you know, fifty acres, you could be out there nowhere for even a year or so. You don't know where it came from.
Well, this ordinance was, was designed for the people that had the huge amount of acreage on top of the, the mountain out there. Not some that's, you know, within the city.
So, no.
So I would say, I recommend that you repeal that.
It was also going to be zoned agricultural culture.
Yeah, you did. I believe so.
Yeah, that was part of, that was part of the stipulation.
I just, I just said it'd be repealed and go back and if we want our, uh, society, they can allow clothes from elevated, go back to the old ordinance, put that in there, but get rid of this one.
I like that, that archery from an elevated position. Uh, we do need urban, urban units here.
Didn't go well last time.
That's, that, we can, we can-
We can get Ralph Minkert back.
We can amend the ordinance. That's the other thing. We can amend the ordinance and see if we repeal it.
Well, and I guess I'm of the, for my house, I can hear cows across, you know, the street from me, you know, and the, you know, the property down there. And I'm just thinking if it's a, if it's an agricultural situation, you know, it's inside the city limits, you know, there's a, a cattleman, you know, trying to protect his, you know, cow from-
I love the idea of like, of saying, one mile from whatever, from all these things. And if, if things, it's kind of like what Lance was saying, we can't make all these small determinations to part. But if you said, you can't go within a mile of a school, well, you, it restricts itself. You know what I mean?
Or you take out the rifles and shotgun, I mean, take side guns only and no pistols, no rifles. Then we're, so, yeah.
Well, I do like that, you know, because I'm, I'm just like in a-
So I bet they talk about what you're talking about.
The hunting part we did. The hunting part it says you're not, but if you left that on the target practice line in there, just haunting this, if the target practice line went in there, it'd probably be okay. But you can just take that out and leave the ordinance the way it is. And then, and then, and then we still have this whole issue of hunting. If we ever do annex some of these people, then, you know, they can still open their shotgun. I mean, if you, I know you don't like the ordinance very much, but if we took out the target practice line, and said, you're at least-
Well, that would never, because the, the hunting portion actually says the-
The annex, well, but I mean, eventually that'd come up.
Oh, I definitely know that.
So, y'all want to do that instead of repealing, you just want to take that line out and leave it the way it is?
I don't think so.
So we just take that line out.
I, I guess that's still all about for a, a person shooting, you know, firearms on property that, or that-
Instead of shooting with a shotgun?
You still shoot them with a shotgun. That'd still be permissible.
I see the papers in the county shooting.
If they've been at the front, they're, you know.
Well, because I didn't know if that still, was, was that, if that caveat was still in there. I would say hunting is still in there, but I didn't know if we take out that, you know, target practice or just shooting. I didn't see where there was any allowance to, you know, discharge of, a shotgun or something like that.
I don't think you can.
You can't shoot a cow with a shotgun?
No, even in that, I mean, if you take out that portion, that covers the target shooting. But everything under money goes at, towards-
It exists in annex that.
Right. So money can't shoot.
Well, you know, they say, and Dr., not someone, I said, I told them, right next to the county big property. And they can shoot all they want to, right next door to you.
I know, that's part of the issue.
Yeah.
If I've got folks who-
John, your backyard-
Target practice, pasture behind my house and-
And like you said, right across the street, right? In my backyard is the city limits. So the guy was there, he shoots all the time. You know, unless I hear it coming through the, the trees toward me, I, you know, it doesn't bother me, but that's kind of what this was about.
Right.
I think that's probably what the issue is. If that county property, if I was in the city limits a few years ago, it'd be way away. You know, we're good. I told the face, what's the difference? That guy, if I was in there, I'd arrest him.
Well, that's, that's your guys' decision.
I see you bring it back to, with that one, strike it out and we'll do it that way.
I'll contact him and let him know that that's what was planned. And if he wanted to speak, uh, in terms of, and we can do that, then come and ask Councilman.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, number two, Councilman Lance Terry.
Um, back last month, I guess, maybe we just had to post some mail. I've received some mail here to kind of find out, I guess, if we open all the mail here at the city. And, uh, that's why I asked for us to discuss the mail and the policy. I had received a letter from the fire academy. It was addressed directly to me and it bothered me. It was had confidential up on it. It was open and I'm not doubting it probably opened with a state, but, uh, named it, you know, stamped inside the letter here. But I was just meant us to clarify this mail opening policy. I was looking at what Charlotte put out here about this city agreeing with budget policy, I guess, for opening the mail. But I think the council needs to set, set what policy we do and this is going to be my, my, my following process. I mean, if we can't trust our department heads to open the mail, I already hear a lot about checks and money and some of these, uh, these deals here. But that's, that's why we make these guys department heads. I mean, if they can't be responsible enough that they get a check or money in the mail to, then we don't, we don't need them if they can't, they can't turn it in. Uh, I think each department ought to get their own mail. The department here, unless it's addressed to the city Greenwood, then yeah, open it up. If it's addressed to, to the individuals personally or the, each department, I think they ought to be the ones taking care of their mail. Instead of tying up everybody, you know, just sitting down and opening everybody's mail up and, and, um, and going through. I, I just, I just don't see any need for that personally, so. But this, this not, this not a, this not a gig in anybody. It's just, I just don't think that's a, I just don't think that's good business. We got a bunch of mail coming in for the parks or the streets or the fire. Even those deals, I think that ought to go to them. And they ought to, you know, the mayor, whoever, and, um, and I think they ought to be able to open their own mail and assume the responsibility that if there is money or checks or anything in there, I mean, this, I, I don't see how they are going to not be able to turn it in. Because I, I like to think we would know if we were getting money in the mail other than the, than if, you know, some of it was in the water bill. I understand that, but I figure that's addressed to the city Greenwood. I don't figure that's going to be addressed to the streets or the parks or the fires. So I just like to, for us, it's kind of just, you know, up y'all guys, get your opinion on it. I just, I just, like I said, I, I, I'm assuming that, like I say, this was an accident, which it's all good. It's all water under the bridge, but it just kind of, kind of struggled on when I found out that we were, we were opening all the mail down here for everybody, so. So it seems, seems kind of odd, so.
I was reading through Charlotte's comments and item one, we take the stamp on material. So there's no question as to when invoice perceived. That's valid. I know that from my business. I sent the fire department a bill for eighty-nine dollars over years ago and, uh, you know, my wife called me one day, said, I'm headed down to, to the county to sue all the deadbeats in city of Greenwood's one steward around the fire department. So I said, well, let, let me get kind of involved a little bit. And so I went down and asked Charlotte and Charlotte said, well, it was stamped two months ago. It's over in that mess of stewards over on his desk. And I went over there and hunted him down and sure enough, it was over there and it was Charlotte and found it. And so that alerted me, taking the city of Greenwood up in front of Judge Parker. And, uh, over not very much, but so I could kind of, I understand that. But I, I really think in our policy that we need to just state, we do not open mail that's addressed to an individual. I don't know how we can open up a mail that's addressed to an individual. If a piece of mail comes addressed to Will Dawson and it says, number thirty, Bell Road, we have no business opening that, opening that up. Now, if it comes to the city of Greenwood, yes, open it up, see what the invoice is for stamped and get it to the right place. But if a piece of mail comes from the Arkansas Fire Academy with health records or, uh, grades, which was in this case, whether it's, you, it was, uh, what your grades were from Arkansas Fire Academy, we don't have any business opening it up, stamping it and looking at it. That's medical records, transcripts, that's all private information. So I think that our policy should be that we do not open mail that's an address, that is addressed to an individual. Now, to a department or to the city, I think we should continue opening it. Notice? You don't like that.
We get it. That's what I'm saying. DEA, FBI, which no one should look at besides a police officer.
But y'all have already circumvented this whole thing. Y'all haven't, y'all, y'all, these complaints went all, these complaints went all the way back to, uh, uh, your predecessor and he was complaining about it when I was on the council. And so it was when he was here, the judge went and opened up another, the old box just to get around all that, right?
I have that in my mind as well. We don't have the voice department. They all did a sensitive matter, contents paperwork.
Well, medical records and transcripts and stuff, that's the sense of the nature.
So it's not necessarily just mark personal confidence. What you're suggesting is, is long, is it's got a personal stake in it.
We can easily amend the policy.
This is a policy, this looks like a policy that was just, like an administrative policy that was just being made by, like-
It was, so you don't have to-
It's not something we have to vote on necessarily, right?
Well-
It's not a policy that we established.
Policy is not official policy until the city agrees with, until the council votes on it.
That's right. We got this here financial policy as of two twenty-eight oh six, approved by the mayor dated.
It's never been signed by anybody, but it's not-
It's not legal policy. The city council, see Doc, what happened is- That's policy.
The fire academy had my, yeah, my address, yeah. Well, I couldn't ever get my scores for a test, I told you. So I asked them just to send it here because it was a lot easier just to have it sent here. And like I said, it's, it's all work and business. It's all good. It's just, I just felt like, you know, when I got it, it was open and it said, was like, hey, you know, that's, that's my mail. And, you know, I had asked them to send it here, they agreed and got sent here. It wasn't, you know, and so that, that was the deal. So then when I found out we opened all the mail, I was just like, that's kind of odd. I mean, it just seems to me that, you know, I mean, not that it's somebody doing anything wrong. It's just that I just feel like that's one of the deals where, you know, we've got departments and they've got mail and the mayor's got mail. It's addressed to him or whatever. If it's addressed to, to Mayor Doug, it's, it'll be one of them. It might be. I mean, that's just, that's just how I feel about that. So I don't want to bring it up to y'all, but it does. And this policy, yeah, it's written out here, but it's, it's not an official, like Rod said, it's not an official policy unless, you know, we want to approve it. So that's, that's hard to bring it up, so we actually get-
The part that Charlotte's made that I'm looking at is the part where the auditor recommended that we have a policy to establish the oversight of city mail.
We didn't see what frame it is.
The auditors are recommending we have some sort of policy to, to, what the auditors-
The auditors ought to recommend that whenever there's money being mailed in, it should be addressed to city Greenwood. And not to, the, for Martin Pitt. Well, but you, whenever somebody, who would send the money, businesses, privileged guys? I'm sure there's a way to contact those people. They were doing a license or when they opened it.
Oh, it comes to the city of Greenwood, Bell Road, and it's me.
I mean, that's what I'm saying.
That should be opened up by the-
Yes, I agree with that.
We, if it says city Greenwood, we need a policy.
That's my point. If it comes, comes rich, if it comes rich McGinnity, Marshall Brooks, you know? If it comes rich McGinnity, I mean, well, opens that up.
I'm just saying that if we don't have a policy, which y'all are saying we don't, the auditor said we need a policy for opening mail that's labeled city Greenwood, then we need to establish a policy.
You need to write a resolution and attach that to, and over on it.
Yeah, and it can be labeled in there that it has to do with the mail addressed to individuals, so.
Just, just like you, Doc, as a council, we have, we have a mailbox and if it comes, Councilman Johnson, did I be putting it box on yours or you just don't be able to open it, so.
Well, I just, I just want to make sure we're dealing with the auditors.
There, that we are. That's what this is.
Well, we don't have to.
But it's not official.
We don't have the official policy, but they're saying, we never voted on what is that?
Would you like us to prepare one?
Yeah, I want to prepare our policy and bring this as a resolution. Yeah.
And with the stipulation that-
Yeah, just, just the line, your formal label to the city of Greenwood, we're going to follow this procedure. Two people open it and have a witness, from out of the individuals, they're going to go to, they're about the individuals and you can make the caveat for the police department as part of that resolution, so that it's all official and-
And if, and if there's any kind of checks or funds in them, that they're in those ambulances that address those individuals, that's on them.
It's on them.
That's, that's some responsibility to be in that position, you know, we have to turn that in and, I mean, I agree.
Well, yeah, there was a case one time that led to, that would heavily lead to this opening procedure. Don't really want to talk about it, but it's a sensitive nature and I want, but it was bad, um, bad math, I guess, to prompt this. So, but, um, we do apologize, Link.
Oh, that's, that's fine.
I left her a question. If you want me to write it or you want me to, we apologize with that.
It's all good. I mean, I just, I just wanted us to get our policy, because I knew when they, I mean, I knew we didn't have one. Our eye had never gone on one as long as I've been here and I never had seen one. So I just figured it was something that we needed to get out here and discuss, so.
While we are at it, I have, we have a lot of financial policies back there. Probably some of them have never been seen by council, by the mayor's strategy, and that, and they were typically ordered council. So we should probably get those prepared as well. Just let you see them all in the program, like on the resolution. Because it's almost impossible.
Yes, Chief.
Is it not a, I guess, I can do this, is it not a federal dance, open mail, address a person intended?
If you open it with the intent to do that, I think this-
Well, I'm just saying, that's why I, that, I, we, we do, Charlie, I'm a hundred percent intent to do it.
Well, it's an asset. It worked sometimes.
Well, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, I hope, I'd be careful on policy, having it do to individuals if it's something that's going to become a bit of a hassle.
Well, yeah, the policy, what we're talking about is only to be open if it's to the city Greenwood. It's an individual, it's not a field, right?
Exactly.
Somebody sent in an invoice, they send it to the department or the city of Greenwood. That should be open, stamped or dated, just to prevent a situation like I had with the Greenwood City Fire Department. Where it was on Veronica Allen versus the city of Greenwood.
Right, well, I'm done with that. That didn't even, that did not prevent anything from people being passed due, you know? And so, I say, if it was made as a place and that's great, but I'm thinking still, if it's to, if it's to the city of Greenwood, I'm sure that's how you add it to rest to-
I have city of Greenwood Fire Department, just like I addressed to the water and wastewater department. Now, if they're something and they pay their bills, it's just the Greenwood City Fire Department that made it.
I think we should pay our bills, but I think that still doesn't prevent, I think, and again, if you made an exception to the police department, you've already made an exception to what the auditors are saying. I think, like I said, if it says the city of Greenwood, then it should be open because usually that's where it's going to have checks or something addressed to that.
That's what I'm saying. If it's addressed to the city, open it up. Open it, stamp it, but if it's addressed to Ann, at the finance department, Ann, I think you want to open it up. It's addressed to Rick Cross, you know, Sonny. I mean, that, those guys will open their own mail. That's, that's what I'm saying.
Well, then we'll be really clear to the auditors and what's happened by resolution and, you know, that will always show the state council to be attentive to the council. Also, I want to say we learned a lesson from Matt, because I didn't like the way it was handled after it was opened. Um, it was tossed into the box. What we should have done is call you, ask, and have you come in and say, we helped you, thank you, so sorry. And not let it flow around after that. So we learned a lesson from that and since I've never been through that before, the accidental opening of confidential mail, now I know how to handle a penal bill differently next time. Anyway, that's probably all. Not so bad.
Only other thing I can throw in the whole deal is- One other thing I can throw in the whole deal is, you're talking about mail, like Rod just said, I send the bill, it's for the Greenwood Fire Department or the Greenwood Parks Department, but if it doesn't say Chief Bryan or Richard McKee, then open it up. Even if it just says a specific department, if it doesn't have the person in it.
So they, they stay.
Because normally, I'm sure that's how your bill payments come in, or your invoices come in, and then if it comes to the department has a name, it's probably marked on a very big one.
Not typically, occasionally we'll have the title, John's title, but not technically with the name.
Okay, I think we're all on the same page, so we'll bring back the resolutions or the policy.
I think we can still get our process done and...
Yeah, and I'll tell you too, just, just, I've sat in my office several times over the last year, and thought, has none of this ever happened before, ever? And this seems like one of those things, but the good news is that it's brought out, we think we get, we get a true policy that is approved by the council, and that, because I know after many, many, many conversations with municipal league about a lot of different things, just in the last year, it's always about councils' acceptance, approval, and a resolution to deal with it. Like Charlotte said, we've got a lot of those loading policies that are just less than, uh, been out there, so this is a good thing to get all squared away. Okay, Parks Commission, repeal the Freedom Fest resolution.
Counsel, this is just a little bit of housekeeping that we need to do here. This resolution, one eleven oh six, was a resolution that was created prior to the creation of Parks Commission, and when we started getting in there, looking at our Freedom Fest committee, we saw some contradictions in there, and I would like for it to have at least rescinded, if you would, and let the bylaws, commission bylaws that already addressed standing committee, let that available. When we passed the ordinance that established this issue, the language in there was specifically said that the Freedom Fest needed to fell under their purview. At the top of the ordinance, it says, "Anything within conflict, conflict with this ordinance is, you know, repealed or rescinded." So it doesn't have to, but we can sure claim that and take a vote to repeal that resolution.
Make a motion, we officially repeal this resolution.
I second it.
Motion and second to repeal a resolution.
The, and you're saying that, you're saying what you said, the park's resolution...
It's specifically said it's Freedom Fest committee.
Probably, probably the redundancy of the...
Why, just, I was just wondering though, I guess I'm kind of looking, I've been here with the Freedom Fest, involved in it with the Lance Club, and I was involved with it with the Chamber, the only time I wasn't involved with it was when it was, you know, with the Boys and Girls Club, and so, and it was always, it seemed like after three or four years, you know, you know, it, it waned, and, and, you know, it kind of fell off, and wasn't, you know, wasn't, you know, the reason was meant to be, a big celebration and stuff. And again, you know, look at Lance, you know, he was the last one to see that, you know, that it had fallen off, and was, you know, nothing of what it was intended to be or what it was in the very beginning. And that's what, you know, concerns me is, is that, that if it's, you know, kind of taken away against from, you know, where the, the council, you know, does kind of have some oversight in it, that, that it could easily again be diminished, you know, some other things could, you know, take priority, or it could be, all festival could be the, the big thing, or it could be, you know, some other event. And they say, you know, Freedom Fest again, you know, is a, a smaller, smaller thing, and we have a situation that's occurred, again, but every Freedom Fest that I've been involved with, you know, after two years, it kind of gets smaller, 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 it becomes...
If you leave the resolution that, that we're asking to rescind, that had already placed all of the responsibility over to the Parks Committee at that time, so there's really no change, this strictly administrative, just clean up a contradiction. There's still a Freedom Fest committee, it's still represented, or has a city councilman on there, and it's still represented by all the organizations that were there. It's just strictly, in fact, one of the things that was, the conflict was in this resolution, it says that the camp, the committee itself will select its own chairman, and then the commission bylaws will be approved, and stated that the Parks Commission chairman will select, the standing committee will select chairman for those committees, so that's, that's just one contradiction. But it still falls under, still falls under the Parks Commission.
The Parks Commission...
It has been since...
And the committees set up the same way.
Exactly.
And the Parks Commission, probably you can repeal this, but it hasn't, like, had it repealed.
But it's still, it's still the same intention, it's still got the same funding from last year.
And, well, they have, you know, I'm just, you know, concerned that, that if, you know, we, again, as the council lose, you know, some discretion, and, you know, that it would, it could easily become, you know, a smaller piece of, of attention from the Parks Commission and stuff. And I guess, you know, a lot of this is rotten, even first of when we created the Parks Commission, you know, and we put that up there. And I think, again, we did that, and the intent of trying to make the, give much more validity to the, you know, the Parks Commission, and, and, you know, show that, you know, we justify the creation of the Parks Commission. But I think, you know, since we've seen the Parks Commission, you know, it has grown and it's got lots of other things to, to say, to be responsible for, you know, so it's, it is its own entity, and it is worthy of a commission. But I'm just be concerned, again, because I've just seen the demise of, of Freedom Fest in the past, you know, by three other groups, and I'm just be concerned that, again, of this being, you know, falling to the, to obscurity again.
Two cents. So that's why you had, my, I think that's why you got a camel's foot on it, on that debate.
I make a motion, we pass this, we...
We had almost an second.
Why are we both...
Any questions to discuss, you, really? Hey, are you, okay, let's call, I'll call for it.
I see, I, I agree with what you're saying, it's just we left this prerogative to the commission, it makes sense, but you're right, you know, it was kind of falling apart, the Boys and Girls Club had it, Lance is the one that kind of got in there and pulled it all together, and he pulled it together with no funding, he went out and got his own funding. And, you know, I, I do think, and I see where you're going, we've lost something. When we were a Parks Grant Committee, you know, there was a lot of people out there ditched that. Me and Martin, when Martin was chair of the committee, we went out, we built a playground, we got Mike McCausch, we built the very first playground, kept the Bell family from taking the park back, and we did things, and we were involved. And then, you know, we were involved in all that, and, you know, then when the Freedom Fest, Lance come, come out and said, "Hey, I want to revive this thing, this thing was junk," and he did. And, you know, now it does seem like we're losing some of the initiative we had. Now you've got a commission, and I think half the commissioners don't even know where the end of the trail is at the lake. I, I think half of the program could name most of the parks. Counsel, I'll accept into that statement, right, on going record. All of it is your BS, yes, okay. But I think we have lost some of that, and I also understand where you're coming from, we left this to the prerogative of the commission, we just got to accept that they're going to take this and run with it and do the right thing.
You can go to the commission any and all you want.
I, may I?
You can do as many times as you want on that commission, I'm sorry, I... Get involved, just do the mail.
Sure, and the commission also, if, yeah, I mean, if I may, I mean, I used to be Parks Director, you all know that, uh, the Freedom Fest has, has blossomed and grown due to what Lance and, and our, one of our best mayors decided to, and to pump it full of energy and everything, and, and it's, and it's not because of the Freedom Fest Committee, but it certainly has expounded, that's not the right word, it has become what it is under the direction of that Freedom Fest Committee. I mean, I think, I mean, it's got better and better, and I appreciate what Mr., Mr., what do you name?
I don't know, mister, sorry.
But it's become better, I mean, it's...
People's got involved that we're not able to get involved.
Yeah.
When we set up the commission, now we got six more people involved than the mayor involved, and we've set up all the committees underneath them, and that allows people to get involved.
I, I can promise you, if this commission, I'm sorry, if this commission was to let the Freedom Fest fall through the cracks, I think, I think they'd hear from, from the citizens.
I just don't, I just don't think they will.
No, they won't, I can promise you that.
They do, and when you get mad about it, who just take a vote, you're not a question.
Yes.
And I, I understand and concern that, that anything has changed at all, I don't, I don't, I don't wish that's coming from them. We have, exactly how my money was spent.
I'm gonna talk about two cents, working on it, it's, it's simple. I, I, I see, I, I appreciate what you're doing, but I, I think, it, it happened the way I wanted it to happen, I mean, I go out to the obstacle a lot of time, two thousand nine, working on that, and Rod's right, I, I, people donated money that doesn't have zero ties to the City of Greenwood. I mean, donated a lot of money, and they didn't have to, they, they, they just did it for, for a favor. I wanted to get over in the city, it got over in the city, and that was my whole entire deal. Once it becomes part of the city, my thought was, it's never going to go away. And now that it's in the Parks hands, they're, to me, I feel like now, that it's all on their shoulders, and if they don't make it work, they're a little like, I mean, they failed, in my book, you know what I'm saying? We put it out there for them to, we got it going, it's in their hands, we got this committee, I don't think it's going anywhere, I mean, as long as I'm breathing a label, it's not going to, I mean, I'm going to put a fight up for it from, from my own, because I, I mean, I take part to it. But also the fact that, like, these guys try to make it a little more organized, a little more better, and, and we have that, and thankfully it's, it's funded that, but I don't have a problem with this, because, because that commission is what it is. I've got my own views about the, the commission, but that's neither here nor there, sometimes you just take things to the grain of salt, go on, and, but I don't think that this thing's going anywhere, I think Richard and those guys are doing a good job with it, we're not always going to agree, no, it's not always going to agree, and that, that's what makes the world, if we all agreed, it would be fun, I mean, it just, it would, it'd be a, be a dull world, and we wouldn't be having this conversation. But I don't have a problem with this, and if anybody's put more time into this than, than me, it's your wife, your wife has done a tremendous job with it, but I don't have a problem, I don't, I don't think anybody, we've established a name for ourselves now in City of Greenwood, the Fourth of July of the Freedom Fest, and, and it's kind of like our, kind of like our football team, you know, I mean, we're gonna, I mean, it just gets better, better, and better, and better, and better, and I don't think anybody, Richard for one, I mean, is going to let that go away, you know what I'm saying? Because, I mean, it's, it's going to make you look bad for one, because we have, we have put it, we have put it on such pedestal, and we've had such a good turnout, and it has been such a success, that I, I don't think that there was a commissioner on there that would, would want to see it, but, and, and that's, that's my point of getting it into the city, because I, I just don't think it's...
And with all respect, this has been under the Parks Commission for several years now, nothing is changing. All this is, that we're looking at, is an administrative taking out a new resolution that referred to a Parks Committee, and letting it fall under the Parks Commission that we created, there's nothing, it has always fallen under for years now, under the Parks Commission. And unless you've seen something fall apart in the last four or five years, there's no change. It was originally intended ordinance, and every one of us voted on, well, okay, but most of us voted on it, so we know, we knew it was in there, we had three readings, and specifically stated that it was subject to the Parks Commission, and specifically spelled out Freedom Fest Committee was subject to the Park Grant Commission. It has been several years. Yes. I don't understand the concern with it dying this year, I think, I don't, I don't know, you guys, we've lost a year on this one.
All right, we have a motion, this is, I like this, uh, no?
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Tim Derry?
Yes.
Lance Derry?
Yes.
Yes, has it gone to your...
Thank you. Thank you, Richard. Um, street departments, but resolution, maintenance and repair.
Joe has asked me to prepare this resolution, there's some repairs that need to be made to the Montier Batto, the cost is sixty-five hundred dollars, funding is available, and six-two-four-five-zero street lighting, and that needs to be transferred to six-five-four-six-zero maintenance and repair equipment, and Greg Dickinson is here, if you need clarification on exactly what repairs are there.
So the maintenance repair line has been out, I'm guessing?
Yes, or it's close, it doesn't have the sixty-five hundred further.
I've got any plans for the asphalt machine?
Well, this one's gonna, I'm no joke, I don't have a question on y'all.
This isn't the asphalt machine.
This is the, this is John Deere or whatever.
This is the repairs.
This is John Deere, I've been there fifteen and a half years.
This is the hardest one. I make a motion, we, the repair, yeah, I make a motion, we pass the resolution over the Batto repairs.
And a motion and second?
Brown?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Tim Derry?
Yes.
Lance Derry?
Yes.
Make a motion, we allow him to talk about the asphalt machine while it's standing there, instead of making him sit down and get back up.
Well, I wouldn't look at it, I, I watched him operate it, and there was a lot of new stuff on it, a lot of, so there's, uh, carry burn, uh, patrol lines, the rebuild, over range, you know, throughout, and, uh...
Do we have an asphalt machine currently?
No, we don't, they had one years ago before I started, and it was just a drag lot.
Do we need one?
We look at our roads, it's a pretty bad...
Is, I mean, but is this going to be something that we use regularly, and get our money worth adding?
Oh, yeah, one road should be...
It's a machine that you can over...
I agree, you know, do several... How much did it cost, fifteen thousand?
No, I believe that one.
It almost seemed like two million.
It does, it does, eight thousand.
It fixes the road.
It is a year.
It's in pretty good shape, you can tell it's hot.
I've actually looked and seen the roads that they, that had there, street department overlay, and they're kind of, like, I'm used to the stuff, and they're kind of bad, and it's great color.
That's one piece, it takes several pieces, several tools to do this, is that the only one we needed? Because we've got the, we've got the thing that puts down the adhesive.
Yes.
That's what we have for twenty-five years.
It would take a, a...
Grab the demo, roll, drill, come back to us.
Do we have a roller?
We did not have that.
So, so we, we can't do much with asphalt machine, it would be the roller, but this is such a good deal, we want to go ahead and get the asphalt machine.
Does the, the asphalt machine too, if I'm not mistaken, eight foot?
Eight foot to thirteen.
To thirteen, so ideal for your trails, which is in the new...
The only thing we're missing is just the roller? So why don't we get a roller, it risks?
Which you can get a ram of, of...
We get ram of...
Don't know if you can get ram, we, I mean, I'm, I'm finding it for about fifteen bucks, some, you, Army Service Roster, and figure something out, we just got to find a place for the fill of this stuff.
I guess if this, is this, when it overlays, is it, you know, like, wrap up the previous one and then overlay? And then do the milling, it just, it's just going to overlay?
It'll overlay.
Do y'all want to run this thing?
Well, uh, between the, through we got out...
We don't run a room, it's a flower pot.
Yes, these, these machines are, are very durable, though, and, uh, between Chad Graus, who we hired, that's, uh, that's, that's worked for the company that does the, And, uh, between Chad Grass, who we hired, that's, uh, that's, that's worked for the company that does the, that is, uh, the police department. He's, he's very knowledgeable. Uh, I can't specifically say who's operated the lay down machine. But, but it's, it's like most machines. It's pretty current. It's, it's very durable.
I've seen you run equipment. I think you can figure that out.
I, I guess though, one up is the fixed streets, you know, are overlay. I mean, is it, you know, like you said, you've seen the ones where it's done in Van Duren, did a good job. I mean, did they do milling first, before they were laying, or did they just overlay?
They just overlay, um...
Matter of fact, the guy that operated, he never operated one before either, he felt the machine here, and he did a real good job.
We're getting this out of street lots, too. I guess we'll just take the rest of the street lots. I make a motion we go buy an asphalt machine.
I say.
We have an agenda issue, I think. And I, I love your, your...
You're not making a motion we...
Well, you did, but we didn't do anything about it. We didn't like, I'm just trying to keep that order right. I've got a, I've got a board here that's freaking out on me. Is that okay? Can we?
I'll move them around in a little.
Okay. Okay, go ahead with your motion.
I make a motion we buy an asphalt machine.
I say.
Motion is second, two courses.
Yes, pass the resolution to move money from street lots, $5,000 to capital expenditures, to go with $10,000 in capital expenditure, so that we can buy.
I just want to know.
Roger, second.
That's $10,000 from street lighting and $5,000 from, actually, all of it, too.
No more, Josette.
He's got a health issue, family across.
What, what was that?
I just, I know it's one place that's telling me lighting on the streets. We've just brought about eleven-five hour street lighting, we might have it here in about three minutes.
You did.
Now, unless we spend over street lighting.
That still leaves, um, just over $10,000 for the remainder of the year.
Well, if we clean out of that, or if you, like, new lights come out of that line out, or let, pay a bill, grow lights, and roll.
Joe mentioned it here today. He said he's just got three months left in the year, and that he'd had it, more money in there than he needed to have, anyway.
So we're just gonna go buy an asphalt machine?
So we're just gonna go buy an asphalt?
Well, we don't know how to run it.
We're gonna get road.
We know how to run it.
I can figure it out.
Mike, Mike and then Mike running it.
I would say that Joe Manis is not gonna ask to move money from line up.
If we don't see asphalt on the road, if we don't farm, in the next year or two, then I'm gonna wish we had bought it.
Well, I guess the one thing, you gotta do here, is $15,000, will it, like you said, fix it too, and it be operationally, you'd like to do, or do you?
Does he have any money to budget for asphalt?
This next year, he just got to buy this for somebody else.
Well, and one thing's, you know, asphalt season, you, you, I don't know if this is the time to purchase asphalt, to be honest with you, if they only make, produce it, or whatever you wanna call it, so many times. I don't know what his plans is. If Joe was here, he'd just... I, I think. Yeah, I think he's really looking forward to it.
We can ask everybody else to get plenty of it.
That's true. And, oh, it depends. Like, the one they used on Atlanta and, and Maine probably had these up. Am I right?
Do the project?
No, 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 he's an asphalt machine.
Yeah, uh, just, just get the price of some of these overlay that have been bid out, and, uh...
Oh, I'm talking, he has the price of a, of a new overlay machine.
Yeah, well.
Three, four hundred thousand.
Well, million, two hundred dollars.
We have, do we have the manpower to, to go off, to do all the things we gotta do to asphalt?
Here's what I would like.
I'm trying to justify it.
Absolutely. Here's what I would like, because I, I can, I can manage, and I can direct Joe, and, and by the way, we're, we're getting better, okay? Joe and I. What I would like for the, for the council to do is kind of challenge, and Joe's not here to accept it or whatever, but I think, I think there should be some sort of challenge. I don't mean glad that you gotta do three streets next year, or anything like that, but there should be something to produce a little bit of the... And, and these guys, I mean, I, I know those two sitting here mean that they're gonna use this thing.
I'm not saying, well, I'm just trying to, I mean...
No, no, I know. The last thing in the world that I certainly want, and I know those guys want, is for that to become a flower pot, like Councilman McDaniel said.
Might we ever do one mile of trail next year?
It's like we start, uh, doing, uh, you know, the citywide pickup tomorrow. We'll go down there for street, and we'll see everyone that needs to be, work on that.
The good news is, somebody asked, do we have manpower? I think, I think we're getting better over there. I think we're getting some guys in here that are very well trained in some of those machines. Mike's one of them, Chad one, Mike though, are very, thank you.
We like the work.
We're, we, we also, and this is not discussion now, but we've taken guys that don't do those things, and we made them maintenance guys to do things that, so we're taking some progress still. Yes, sir. That's right.
I'm just worried about running away with the buys and lights.
Yeah, I, I don't know, the line out. I think that line out, I said, I don't think Joe would present it at all, or have, had a fan presented, if you could, but I don't have any.
Well, you got a paint machine, right? Paint the lines there.
We do. We have no paint.
He's gotta fix the roads, it's working bad.
But each one of the gates are exacerbated.
I mean, I'll just gotta walk the road like I do everywhere, and there's horrible.
They get these droughts.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah. We have a motion in a second.
Ms. Brown.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Daniel. Tim Terry.
Yes.
Lance Terry.
Now, we're going back to, uh, please.
We received the insurance claim that on the top of it was total, and chief has found that he wants to replace it, so this resolution is to allow us to purchase it.
Joe filed it.
You got full package?
Yeah.
Four aspects?
So it's just the $8,000? Is that all they need to, just to adjust the budget?
Or is that?
No.
That's the insurance.
It's, uh, I don't know, five, the only money that's needed out of, um, cash in the bank is $628.55. That's under the insurance.
You already bought it.
No.
Next week.
I thought you were driving it through the day. So you're wanting some interesting $48 over something we can carry to sales tax, this resolution?
No. We need to increase capital expenditure by the total cost of the BDR, plus the, um, out day, and Denver could be that, and the insurance plan is $628. So Joe had to use $628.55 out of cash in the bank.
But it says county sales tax. I think that looks strange, because it was priced $200 county sales tax, which we know is, it's available in cash in the bank. Yes, but their budget comes from general county sales tax, not county like it's a harbor.
Because county sales taxes in excess this year is...
Well, but it's not from, um, county sales tax.
Not, no, not from the county sales tax. It's available in $1,200 cash in the bank, and the reason it's available is because of the sales taxes.
She just said, I prefer, she's from the sale. I make a motion we pass this in a lot of time.
Second. We have a motion to second.
Brown.
Yes.
Dr. Johnson.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Daniel.
Yes.
Terry.
Yes.
Terry.
Oh, wait, we want to go on asphalt machine. You'll find out. From a sidewalk, sorry.
And then sidewalk fund to increase the line out of 61300 sidewalk enhancement by $10,000, with funding available in $10,000.
What are we gonna do with that?
One, oh, sorry, what?
What sidewalks would we enhance?
I know he had mentioned Main Street. A lot of them are on Main Street, but then he said other sidewalks.
Is he building some new sidewalk?
They're taking out old sidewalks and replacing on Main Street, both sides of Main Street. There are major trip issues happening. It's the old, it's the old 1938, yeah. So we have...
Build a new sidewalk. What's it take to build a new sidewalk to add to, to get more sidewalk?
We're back to the issue to repair.
I'm not sure you know the question. That's, he's taking out, building, replacing, replacing what's damaged.
Is he gonna be in CCC?
It'll be.
I'd hate to see him.
Some of it, they're bad.
Talk to him about that, about, you know, where, where it actually says CCC.
Some of it, there's one area that you, it's, it's crumbling.
But is there a way to preserve the stamp?
Some of it, yes.
You know what I'm saying? We can, that's a little similar.
I, I walked it.
What they did over on Denver's, they cut it out, placed it back into the new sidewalk.
Well, it's not just, if he's gonna crumble that and cut it out, break it from my house, and all that.
I guess not gonna do that. He's gonna, he's gonna prefer, preserve that CCC stamp.
That's what I'm asking. If he's gonna tear that sidewalk, we do, let's find that CCC stamp and keep it there.
I make a motion to pass the resolution with the added language that he preserves the historic CCC stamp.
Second.
Our motion is second.
Well, so we're, so I guess there's enhancements in a spot where that stamp is looking?
Well, they're, they're, they're tied up Main Street. There's several places.
And, and, and so you don't expect to see this, because I'm a little, okay, it's gonna have brand new concrete, then old concrete, then new concrete. But I understand the problem, I mean, Joe, you, you go from here to, you go from all the way up Main Street, it's not all bad. And when I say bad, it's not all crumbling and cracked and, and misleveled. It's gonna be a different color, obviously. Uh, but after years, it'll, it'll all be the same. So don't expect all, all of Main Street to be completely redone. There's a house, I'll tell you very specifically, one area in particular, there's a house, John Cecil, I ran into John, he was the corner, Denver, or... Yeah, Denver, man. The house next to him, or maybe two houses that's been doing all the remodeling for years. They had a whole new circle drive in their road. He, he himself, that particular citizen, replaced a section of sidewalk, because it was right next to what he was already doing. There's several other areas in front of him. He would have liked to, for us to redo the whole thing. They didn't need it, so we went and looked at it, and there'd be some patchwork there. When I say patch, it's not, I, I, I mean, we're doing thirty feet here, twenty foot there, so.
My assumption would be that he's gonna follow the law, and it'll all be ADA.
This, yes.
But I, I guess, I love five historical lancers too, you know, CCC, but I would want them to, I guess I still wanna make a structurally good statement on sidewalk, you know?
This, this is done by...
CCC sounds like...
By the way, our street park, this will not be done by our street park, but you know, this has been hired out, like, it's been doing for a while now, because they, it's the spanning crew, and they did a great job, and they're very careful.
They did a very good job, that's true.
Thank you. I mean, now we've got lancers out there. Yeah, they did.
So, we need a moment?
Uh, yes.
Pass the moment.
We should have took it all the way to Zach.
Well, we're going to, that very, we may do the next step.
What I suggested, to make that one.
Was it baby steps?
Two years, baby steps, one time?
Wouldn't make a part of this.
I just, I mean, I would have been nice to take it all the way to Zach. I can draw on my motion, and you had to.
Well, if you thought there's some places need to repair, it's kinda like the old playground now. We wanna put a playground near the corner, but then the very first one, it's all apart, and so we forget about having main thing and stuff. So you can put, you can keep adding new sidewalks, but you have to repair existing as we go. So, I mean, if, if Joe had something in mind that was falling apart, and crumbling, and misleveled, like y'all been talking about for five or ten minutes here, then all of a sudden, we'll need to go on adding eighty-five feet of brand new stuff, and we just have something to repair.
I bet we come back to you, and I'll give Joe, we come back to you with the new, new sidewalk project.
See, I'm Joe, mentioned to me, wanted to take out the, the hill crack on the sidewalk. Something walking once, and that's just part of gold, is to go out there, take out all those.
That's what I'm saying, that needs to be fixed.
And I think that's just planned.
That's what is planned.
Yes. But we will, I promise you, you'll, you'll receive a new sidewalk plan, too. And part, in the parks, the planning commission, we, we talked about that money coming out of sidewalk fund, will not necessarily come from the planning commission to get their approval on where these new sidewalks, yes? We're counting agreement with that.
As, I do asphalt machine, and lay there, all down Zach and Park, and, uh...
Just paint, I'll give you a paint on the side. We got the paint.
We have a motion in a second on this resolution.
You do want the language added to preserve the historical stamping on the old stuff?
Yeah, when, when it's feasible.
Yeah, just cut, you just cut the section out and bring it up here and lay it down, so I don't care if it makes part of the sidewalk, and I just don't know.
But you aren't want that if we can, this is what we're watching.
They could, they could cut those out and square them up, and, yeah, I'd rather be part of them.
Okay.
Just, just like across the Lances house, they just cut it out, and they just placed it right back in there. It just looked like a house. Just like across the street from Lances.
Ms. Brown.
Yes.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Tim Terry.
Yes.
Lance Terry.
Thank you.
The last resolution I have is to increase 64415 within the police fund, insurance building, and property by $8,000, with funds available in $1,200 cash in the bank for the fund.
Make a motion to pass that resolution.
Second. Motion is second, pass resolution.
Ms. Brown.
Yes.
Ms. Brown.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Terry.
Yes.
Terry.
Number nine, fire department. Ball intake.
Something, something going on, fire, first fire. Uh, let's see, I read one thing. I, I know about Artel, basically, they have a, uh, uh, what is it?
LDH.
LDH, uh, politics foul, and Dan's doing fire incident, and we got some money back from, uh, insurance, so I need to, uh, move money over from the fire fund into the, be budgeted, actually be budgeted. And, uh, it'd be, we're gonna change where it says city sales and use tax fires, actually, it'll be fire fund, but city sales and use tax is the wrong account, so. Uh, and so, Charles, we can make that adjustment for making this discussion.
Is it a different number as well, I guess?
Yes. One, two, number.
What was the number?
One, two, number five, and the section one, it also have a, uh... Where some funds are available in the city sales and use taxes struck down, just a part of it.
And this, the $2,500, what you got from the insurance building?
Uh, we got a little less than that, that's what I'm taking for twenty-two, and, and just, yeah, about a thousand. We had to pay money in fire fund to cover the rest of it. This one, this one that we're replacing with, it's actually going to be three inches shorter.
I make a motion, we approve this resolution with the pending changes.
Second.
Motion is second.
Ms. Brown.
Yes.
Dr. Johnson.
Yes. Yes.
Daniel.
Yes.
Tim Terry.
Yes.
Lance Terry.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. That was the last item on the business district, okay? In case I missed one, I missed one. I would like to inform the council, and I think it's in your packet, I hope it is, of the upcoming, uh, you asked me to get a list for you, for the auction. Should have that in your packet, and we...
I don't think I have it. Nobody wrote it.
Sorry, we have, would you like to see a list? That's what we wanted, I think, for, thank you.
When's the auction?
Uh...
November nineteenth.
November nineteenth, at ten a.m., with, uh, Sam and Ian, they brought it here in the yard, which we've done in the past. Should work, you guys have a list, here you go.
Y'all already done it, don't, except I had it, as long as you saw the address.
While we got a little downtime, I, I guess everybody got this, I didn't, what's this, the auditor?
I don't know, did you get it from mail?
Land Display of Joint Auditing Committee, uh, notified, audit has started, the City of Greenwood.
Yes.
They are...
I'm on it just in case, we needed it.
They are residing in the, uh, what was, very briefly, the Wonderland.
Or they will after the election is over.
Yeah, that's true.
Just be their, their court's mint office.
Is this for a tax for dual, for everybody voting?
Yes. Uh, we'll, we'll just go ahead and get in department, head reports, questions from the council, uh, can you, uh, start us off?
Sure. City sales and use tax is up 3.8%, um, this past month, over the same month as last year, and up a total of 4% year-to-date, over 2014. Um, city sales and use tax police is up 3.8%, same month last year, and of the total of 4.7% year-to-date. County sales tax was down 0.4% for the same month last year, but it's still up 3.7% year-to-date. That is good, but when, in preparing the budget, I'm only still doing it at...
We're looking at having some study sessions to talk to you.
Yes, uh, I'm, I do not have the budgets from the government houses yet. They will have them to me by the ninth, so I will work on the tenth through the thirteenth, if you wanna schedule sessions, um, the week of the sixteenth. I don't know if you wanna...
I just like to pass the budget for the first few years.
For going to December, because we're gonna start that week of the sixteenth, and you can be back, and then that first week in December.
Could we maybe start with some of the departments that are not, depending on whether this city sales and use tax passes, or is extended to where maybe they can plan that, and so that would be parks, fire, streets? Streets, that, that, not so much them, but... Just parks, parks and fire, maybe they wanna be last, where they can figure out what they wanna do.
And why are that committee meeting that will not have that? And why are that committee meeting that they'll not have that meeting until the end of November, so you can't do water and sewer until December?
Not just no parks and fires express concerns, or, or budget may be different if the sales tax is extended.
Exactly.
So, it's very nice.
Of course, the budget, one more year, I'm not, never.
But, um, they, they want to make-
They might not want to spend it all next year.
If I was faced with three million dollars over the next ten years, my plan may be different actually here.
Right, so if we start maybe with the planning police?
Okay. I'm still trying to figure out my bills for what it's going to cost to run the building, and new bills, and I need to be last.
I want to build a car, RV trailer, but I'll help you out.
That means planning then, to be able to be done in November, and then the rest will have to, the same.
You still want, hey, we're talking, or?
We don't need to pay to get it passed, for the first year, so.
I mean, I, I like to ask questions of council regarding budgets, we have to pay sessions, uh, and I'm not, don't, careful, don't hurt me. I'm just, I really want to, uh, get, get with the department heads, get their budget really down to what they think it should be, what it needs to be, and, and then present it to you, as, as I think has been the wish and desire for council for a while. And then, instead of asking out a lot of small things, I'm not saying you can't ask, you can ask if you want to. Do you absolutely need all the department heads here? I, I've said in these department, these study sessions myself, as department head over the years, and it seems like a lot of it unnecessary. I don't mean that to add in any warmer fashion, I just like to streamline as, as much as we could. I know you need to ask department heads questions, obviously, uh, but the department head and myself are going to present to you a budget that they like and they can live with, and then we'll see, I mean, how, how would you like that to be done?
The only problem I would have, and I, I understand what you're saying, the only reason I'd like to be there is because if we go start slashing stuff, and then the next day they come in, and I'm like, whatever's going, you're like, well, they, those idiot councilmen, cut it.
Well, I would prefer that, you know, everything not be dumped in there and then we have slashed, I would prefer that things are put in, and then let's go in at the end and say, let's consider COLA, and be able to look at the whole thing and see what we've got. Instead of putting COLA and all these other things in, that we seem to kind of have to go in there and fight, to take out.
Yeah, it's not so much that the chief needs bullets.
It's the casual stuff that gets slapped. Being out of, is the ones that, that they're always in a bunch, you know, that's why, ask for a world, then you might get mistakes, or whatever, so, I mean, I-
I think it makes it longer when we have to go in there and start taking out.
Sure.
Well, I agree, I mean, I would think, oh, it would be wonderful to bring a budget, but we don't have to slash. You work out with your department heads.
It'd be better to bring a budget than we add to it.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, you guys know what your projections are going to be, they know what they want, there's no point in making a budget that doesn't-
But that's what Doug's saying is too, you stop thinking about what he's saying, is he's going to give those, they're going to bring a budget, and this is what we, this is what they can live with.
Sure.
Do they need to be there for that?
Yes, I think, I like to leave department heads there.
I do too, I'm just saying, but what he's saying is it's going to cut a lot of the, cut a lot of the fat off, if, if you let him do, present it, so here it is. This is what, you know, I've got with Sonny, I've got with whoever, and this is what he says he can live with, two thousand sixteen, and then we're looking at, to what do we want to add to that, and all that, you know what I'm saying? I mean, I, I see what Doug does.
Well, I'm like Charlie, present you a balanced budget, and then let-
That's what we're all, all kind of doing.
And let you decide if that's what you want.
But, I mean, you guys can work all that out before we ever have a-
We'll, we'll do our best to do that.
They give us a balance, but it's sometimes, uh, Sonny might have talked me into saying, well, he might do it more, you know, like the, the great cross needs out of work. I mean, even if you get a balanced budget, there might be some of the, I personally might think that this department needs more than the other department needs, or, you know what? You understand what I'm saying?
I do, I do, and I absolutely do, and, and no disrespect to them, but I, I think you really have to allow those department heads to decide what it is they need.
Right.
Because it's been seven more times than one, especially tonight, you got to trust the department heads to decide what they need and what they, how they're going to run their business for a year, so. I understand what you're saying, absolutely.
And, and I would say on our part, if there's something that we're passionate about, any one of us, that we want to see in the budget, we need to get that in the matter.
Yeah.
And say, hey, I want to set budget where this is addressed.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, I mean, I-
You bring me a balanced budget, and you don't address my pet projects, and you can rob everything you want.
But I don't want to say in that department, like we have done before, take the chief route, you know what I'm saying? Just to get, just so we can say that we got that, you know what I'm saying? I mean, like in the, in the street department with that one here, I mean, Joe was looking at, at that bulldozer, and we didn't even have a top on it. I mean, what are you going to do with the seat for five years? I mean, are we robbing it off, you know, I mean, that's what I'm saying is-
And you're dealing with the personalities there, that somebody-
You got, you got, you got to weaken your plan for that, for long term, for the last, instead of doing it every year.
He wouldn't mind up tipping that seat, but, but that doesn't make sense, we're a city, we don't do tipping.
Take the seat out of the tree sweeper, and we don't forget it.
We're going to take off the asphalt.
I will tell you too, and, and I have a commitment to myself, not only to everybody, but my commitment to myself is when we buy these pieces of equipment, is that they're not, and, and you're right, somebody mentioned earlier, there's a piece over there that right now that's, I, to my knowledge, and I thought my street department, that was, has been used since we bought it, I, I wasn't the mayor when we bought it, it may be different. I'm, I was in the impressions, and one thing I was told by somebody else that it's, that's really not what it is, so. I was kind of upset that we're not using this machine, well, that's not what it, that's not what it was, it's something different. So, sometimes those things kind of play, but I'm, I'm trying, and, and still that is, and some of the, some of the department heads, and not, there's nobody in particular, but it's, there's no use, okay, here, there is, there's no use in buying something if we're not going to use it, I don't have the best selling.
Well, all, all that being said, I think going back, I made a role for the asphalt deal, we've heard four times, not for Joe's position, we, we don't have time for that. We're doing this clean out, this is this is, but yet we're got, that's why I mentioned-
Sure, I understand.
We have manpower, we can't clean it.
Absolutely, and, and believe me, and, and, you know, and I know you guys know, and again, and I was, this is odd for me to be talking on the other street department, but there are so many things that are not, uh, it's not glorified, it's not, it's not gray, it's not, you don't hear it, it's not in the paper, although Dustin had done a good job, thank you Dustin, for putting a ditch cleanout in the paper. We recently had a gentleman, the more we see names, maybe, but he, he, he was on television bragging on street department for keeping ditches and creeks cleaned out to lower the chances of, of, uh, creek flooding, you guys not flooding, you know what I'm talking about? So, no, that's not paved the road, and that sure doesn't look good, nobody thinks about it, but the people that were flooded sure know it, so. There's a lot of stuff that goes on in, in that striping, we have a rainy striping machine, and then we, we tried it out right in front of the, one time, and we hadn't got any paint, and I looked, Joe lived there, I said, why are we using it? Well, I don't want to be painted, well, how about we buy some? So, it's a, it's a different, it's a different- Yeah, that's right, I don't want to argue on that, but I, things are starting to kind of come together, as far as I go, no, no, fixing it, it's just staying the way it is. Yeah, how did that happen? Do we have some other money on, or what are we doing?
I was just-
So, the budget date I bought.
A budget date, study session, all right.
Let's pick time in December.
My biggest thing is the time, you know, if, if we're going to do the budget, is there value in doing budget study sessions still? Or do we just want to have one long marathon day? Because it seems like we did a lot of budget study sessions last year, and then, you know, it's hard to show up at all those study sessions, and then we end up doing, you have the purpose of the study session, so we wouldn't have a big marathon, maybe, and then we had a big marathon meeting anyway, and went through line by line.
What's your study session?
And, and so, I want, either or, if, if, I'm okay with it either way, I just don't want to come and spend, do four, two to three hour budget study sessions, and then come back up here again for, pass the budget, that we all have time to study on, and not just go done, and then go through it line by line again.
If the mayor and Ann and the department heads could put together a budget like we were talking about a few minutes ago, a balanced budget that incorporates everybody's wishes and wants as much as possible, and could send that to us with maybe an itemized, you know, here are the things, you know, AC wanted, whatever, you know, and that's, there, you know. Give us this budget, let us study that on our own time.
I'm okay with that, and that's been suggested in the-
Here are the changes that I want, here's why I want it.
Here are the things, I mean, it's probably not going to happen, but it's conceivable that you can do that, and we don't have to sit through to our budget, we, everything gets accomplished, that'd be awesome.
Yeah, I'm okay with that, I'm okay with you saying, and being free going to study sessions, just sending me a budget. It's just, if we're going to have the study sessions, I want to start making a plan for them, so I can pay my time accordingly. If we're going to have them, we want them to be valuable, and not waste the time.
Mr. Hamby, if we start, if they start emailing us things, and we start discussing things through email or something, is that a-
Probably should not do that.
Well, we just, yeah, I think we just see it.
And then you review it on your own, and then discuss it.
Individually.
Just like you send me the agenda, you can send me the budget, or I can, you can make out a paper budget, and I'll come pick it up and look through it.
I, I know for that, I was just kind of worrying that, you know, we start commenting or whatever, you know, we don't even get that.
So, we're going to not do a budget study session, y'all put together a budget, we get a hard copy, we study it on our own, we can ask questions, and then we'll have a meeting, one big long meeting where we pass it.
I think the one big long meeting is, and, and again, just to speak from a past department head meeting, the, the department head that used to come in with different little two hours here and over there, the problem was, and there's no disrespect meant, but then, because you guys have lives and families, it's hard to get all six of you here one time, and you end up with a two hour session with two councilmen, and then two weeks later, you have two other councilmen who then pick apart what the other two did, it's just, it's just-
What else is worth, wow.
So, I, I'd love to see what you're seeing. Right. I mean, well, I-
I think we need to be all in on the general fund that's going to give money to, like, if we give any of the boys club, the local city citizens. I think we need to be involved in that one, personally, I don't, I don't know, like, I guess that's your, the mayor's, the department head's, the general fund, or, you know, whatever the one that we, that we got to delegate, that cash, I want, I'd like to have a, I'd like to be involved in that. Well, I mean, if we're not going to sit through and have a fire chief and a police chief come in and have two hour little bank, and then another day have two other department heads come in, I'd, I'd like to be there for the one where we get that.
In my mind, this one day, one session, one night, whatever weekend, lock in, I don't know what we would call it, is that it's all, it's the whole thing. And, and if both the department heads are there, you, you can still look at, still go, okay, here's, here's, I got a little issue with this, and, but you do the general, I mean, it needs to hold.
And it's an actual way to meet.
Sure. Yeah, because that's going to be a big question, if you were, or, or the girls club, lacking money and everybody.
I got a suggestion, because it's going, it's not going to be funny in a way, we know that, we've done that, we've all done enough, we know. So, in getting everybody here, it's just, I'm just going to say it because we're here anyway, after the, after the December meeting, we get these budgets to us, we all take the time to look at them, after the December meeting council meeting, that means we're all here.
Yeah.
I mean, we might be here at eleven o'clock, but, I mean, you know what I'm saying? But after the meeting, have, have that, that, that session, and all get on the same page, but I mean, but in the meantime, we're going to have, we're going to have to take the time to look at those budgets. And what, and if you don't like something, that's when you, you're going to have to call Doug and say, hey, this is what I want to see, and then, and then after that meeting, we're all here, because I'm, I'm kind of, I always said that, I, I think it's best that we're all here, and if for some reason we can make the meeting short and quick on that-
Maybe they have a December because of the crazy stuff.
It might not be, because sometimes that changes the way they do that.
You know what I'm saying, and, and if, like you say, Doc, have it, you know, have it passed by the first year, and you just suck it up and do it. There's never going to be a perfect plan. I know, I'm okay with that, I, I think the way the budget gets presented to us too, I would vote for, if we're going to get an opportunity to look at it, I would, rather than, we can't even get through, we're on department one of department reports, we've been on that for about thirty minutes. So, you, I wouldn't want to do, I don't like the format where, where, okay, you get up and you present your part of the budget, and we sit here and quiz you, and then the next guy gets up, and the next guy gets up, because that takes forever, but just, if there's specific questions we can ask. I had this one question about streets, is we're not going through every department line by line, we just, we study it. That's why we're going to have to be disciplined as a council, look at the budgets. It's our responsibility, yeah, our responsibility, look at that. And if there's an issue or something that you want to see done, or, and that's, you get Doug and have him, and he wants to present it on that, and I, like you said, if you've got a few questions on that final bill, then we can ask our orderman, rather than going through line by line. So, you're going to try to get us the budget for next council meeting?
Yes, as long as I have it from everybody else.
It needs to be, you know, at least meet before the council meeting, we don't have time to read it.
Right.
Yeah, so, December first would be the drop in.
So, and, I, going along that thing, then, then, so, for the next meeting, December meeting, then we'll kind of forego the department reports, just go into the budgets.
Yes, yes. And maybe you can get past the budget somehow. That's what I'm saying, I mean, just, have it, have it all, not, we'll all be here, we're here anyway.
What are the mission meetings?
We might, we know, so. So, that, now, we won't go to the department reports, we do the budget.
Acknowledges.
No, no admissions to, to- Acknowledges.
Listen, a little Joey says, little Joey says his dog can get run over, and he knows, and he's all right.
That's my, that's my decision.
Okay, I think we're on the same page, I think, sounds good.
Can, can we authorize the mayor to give bonuses to all the department heads, we get out of here the next?
I need to call the bonuses.
Consent it.
What is their report?
Prefer them all.
Okay.
Okay, and then the last thing I have, uh, last Friday, we had with Bill Boy from Palmer's Gamble, who does our water and super audit, and, um, it was a fairly clean audit, uh, we got the standard segregation of duties finding, which, as we say every year, is on every audit, pretty much for every city. And the other finding, um, the accounts receivable balances, um, did not balance to the general ledger, and the majority of that, is more than likely due to the billing software not being integrated with our current general ledger software, but this new software that we are purchasing, the accounting software, will be able to be integrated, so we're hoping that will alleviate that. The interest on the CDs that we have was not reported in, um, two thousand fourteen, all of that interest was under a couple hundred dollars on each, on each one of them, or a hundred actually, on each of the rates that we have. Meter deposits payable, it, um, does not reconcile with the general ledger, and that's something that we're going to drill into and see if it's, has to do with the RBS billing software and the reports that we receive, and then how we can report things in our general ledger, to figure out what is causing that to be off. The prior year adjustments, uh, journal entries that were given to me, I did not have those entered in two thousand thirteen, so I will get those posted as well as the fourteen ones that, um, were given to us. And the unit accounts payable balance, there were a couple items that were left off of the accounts payable list, and I'll carry it over into fourteen. But all of the findings, he said, were, um, minimal, they were not substantial.
Are, are meter deposits, is payable, are they done on a monthly basis right now, or do we just kind of do them once we get us started?
Well, what happens is, you know, people put up their deposits, and then as they move, their deposit is applied to their account, and then the balance of that has been, is given back to the customer as they leave, and that balance does not balance with what the general ledger, which is our accounting software, I report all the deposits that come in, and I report all the payments that go out. Well, somewhere, the billing software does not match up with that, we're not sure if it has to do with, from prior billing software, and the accounts have been off all along, or what the situation is, so we're going to drill into it, figure it out. Kristen and I both had one thing in the water office, she'll be able to look through reports, and then hopefully apply those to the general ledger, and figure out where the other things are correct.
Ann, I don't know, the water office girls are here, was there any, do we have any problem with mail, or bills getting out? Was there a pattern, or did we see a big deal the last couple months, or, I had a number of people telling me they got-
I had a number of people telling me they got their water gone off, didn't get a bill or a shut-off notice, and I didn't know if there's, lit somewhere, or if there was...
I did not hear anything.
Actually, it fell off. I mean, halfway decent upstanding citizens too, which, you know, a lot of people get their water gone off because they're just, whatever, a couple folks had asked me, but I'm... Anyway, it was funny, but they said when it came down and actually get it, turn, pay it, there was a lot wrapped around the building of people that were in the same boat, I didn't know if anybody would call them. Or if the mail lady, I, I chested her wife, but she didn't put her in the mail that area.
As far as I know, there were mail, but I do not have...
I don't ask you to ladies up front, just going in.
I will find out, but, you know.
We have had that issue that we think people would just leave their bill, second notices, in fact, we're looking at second notices, most companies now already can give a second notices.
Right.
Um, so we're evaluating whether we need to continue doing that. Although, we do go over, when you sign up and sign in, if you don't get your bill, it's still due, you should probably look into it, because we're somewhere to be out of, where it's happening. When the post officer here, I don't know, was, was causing the...
I didn't zero in if it was the same housing area, that would've been, I guess I should've investigated a little further, two blocks. Same neighborhoods, but I would say the mail lady missed the spot.
Well, plus also, there are postcards, and sometimes they do get stuff in, um, like, the magazines or something.
Right.
And then, because they're mail, or...
She runs out of time, and she throws it in the back, goes home.
Yeah.
Well, we hope that's what it's saying, not already going to software.
I'd probably just want to thoroughly witness some of it.
I'll, I'll get to a little rest.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you. We're in the water, which is our commission, you don't need anything, do you, Sonny? Great shaking his head now.
Uh, Mayor Council, Mr. Hamby. Uh, not over, I attended a E D O meeting for discussing current future projects with the Arkansas Highway Department for this area. The home highway department is also on hand and a representative from the federal highway department that report on possible funding to the highway. We approved the draft for the metropolitan training plan, update for the regional trail plan, and wayfinding. You'll notice in your packet there that sample some of the wayfinding signs that we're looking at. Uh, right now, the, uh, wayfinding community is looking for rapid cars, that must be something that would be unique for this area. Uh, but that's, that's what we're talking about, when we talk about the wayfinding signs. The mayor, Michael Wong, Gary Ryan, Brooke, and I attended a C D I boot camp for economic development at the Janet Hockley Center on the 12th of the last month. Very good meeting, uh, we, uh, we had a gentleman from Newport, Arkansas, spoke, and talked about his relationship or that community's relationships and face build, and how regionalism, uh, really adds to the economic development of your area, uh, having certain communities working together. Also attended a year ending for the, uh, regional alliance for, maybe for members were assigned, I was elected to serve on the governmental committee. Uh, and that's where we stay engaged with the elected officials in this area, the lot of the plus things, it's river development, uh, protection of interstate highway forty-nine, other transportation improvements. Uh, the building department had two new housing starts this month, uh, accessory buildings, one remodeled, one addition, one, uh, former shelter, and one swimming pool, uh, with construction value of eight hundred fifty-one thousand six hundred and forty. We've hired a new replacement, or hired a new replacement for Joseph Powell, who's now working for the Sebastian County Sheriff's Department, the same as Jerry Rickles, and Rick, excuse me, uh, started the city on the, the twenty-sixth, and I'll introduce him to the council next month. Uh, on waybill, we got it being poured and everything, so he'll be here next month and, and I'll introduce him. Updates on the Greenwood fixture building proceeding with the parrot group there completed, parking lot on the west side is finished, and it's actually finished on the east side too, but they decided to put another drain, uh, from the building out to the highway, and that's what you're seeing, the concrete drain out there. Uh, Pope Roger should be commended, uh, for this project. He's heading it up, and, uh, he is usually all local labor. So, city, uh, doesn't appreciate that. Uh, D S C is continuing, it looks like the December opening might be moved to January. Uh, they're in the dry, heating areas in, and they are painting on the inside. Uh, last month, I gave you guys a, a copy of an ordinance I proposed for the minimum housing standards. Uh, wanted to see if you've had a chance to look at that, if there's any, uh, thing that you would like to change on it, any additions. Uh, if not, I was going to propose a grant in front of you next month to put it on for the first reading. Any questions?
Thanks, son. Uh, had the privilege of swearing in Officer Ricketts this afternoon, so he is officially, of course, in control. He did a good job, Joseph certainly did a great job of ours, and I think Jared's gonna step up to the plate and carry on that tradition, and he's a little anxious to see him in uniform. He's already had several possible, I don't know, steps, so he's broken.
Sorry, you can't wait to see him.
I can't wait to see him. Richard is already, is already, uh, Chief, Washington, you'd like to address the council.
Mayor Council, Mr. Hamby, this is Terry. Month of October, we've had two hundred seventeen calls, seventy-two tickets were issued, blew the hundred fifty-nine warnings. Had twenty-five accidents, eight, eight of those being private property, seventeen public. C I D was assigned twenty new cases and closed seventeen. They have been assigned two hundred nineteen cases for the year and closed two hundred ten for a ninety-six percent closure rate. For training, we had, uh, we hosted C J I here in a new classroom. Lieutenant Hobbs and, and a few get extended at training. They called the next week and asked, uh, after, after they had been through the class there, uh, C J, C J I called the instructor call and asked if they'd come back and use our classroom again, because they were so impressed with it and with our hospitality, so we'll have them back again in March for that training class again. Uh, there was forty-four people in that class from all across the state. We also had police and minority relations, uh, it was a big class, that's the whole department attended that class. Sergeant Pippen, once again, went to that leadership class in Little Rock, like I said before, he does one week a month, or six months on that class. We, uh, co-sponsored with a school, Missy Jenkins, who was a school shooting victim in Kentucky, uh, Baduka, Kentucky, uh, quite some time ago, I think it was nineteen ninety-seven, if I remember right. But, uh, we're trying to figure out things to help out with, uh, try to eliminate bomb threats, and, and, uh, it's an emotional story that she tells, she's in a wheelchair, uh, she was shot in her left chest, and it did paralyze her from the waist down. So, she got to have three different sessions with different schools, and talked about the impact on her life, and, uh, and we're hoping that that certainly helps out with the bomb threats, and, uh, maybe it's true to some that, that follow about doing that. So, so we co-sponsored that and paid for that with the school. In our classroom, we hosted a junior, uh, fall group, uh, gave them toward building, uh, and explained some of what she's, what we use each portion, uh, portion of the building for. They asked a lot of questions, and then, and the mayor took over, and talked about actually the fall events that they're gonna be doing. Uh, we participated in Fall Fest, Mark and Jeff set up up there, and we're up there. Sergeant Davis, uh, participated in an international force run conference that was in the Bahamas. We didn't pay for that, Torche Rounden did, or Torche Rounden people did, uh, uh, he got a trip to the Bahamas because of his, uh, participation in special others. That's all I have. You have a question?
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Chief?
Mayor Council, Mr. Hamby. Uh, our department chief has paid me for October, so we have to pick up proper responses. Out of those eight of fire-related, uh, restructuring fires, three wilding fires, four mutual aid fire incidents, made a five, a total of eight collisions. Weird how that goes back and forth, last month we didn't have single one, and thirty-five rescue medicals, and three mutual aid medicals. Training, uh, we've got, we're trying to schedule for Arkansas Fire Academy, and we also wanna do some training this week with the enforcement bomb squad, the F B I. That's I D awareness, and we'll put things up over in Chappy. Uh, fire prevention pepper relations, this is our biggest business month of the year, and it's always, it's much the case of the proud department. We did, uh, participated in Fall Festival, National Night Out, Greenwood Police Department, uh, Greenwood Cross Country Meet and Build Park, uh, where we go behind the tires when someone falls out and do medical, uh, with players. Hosted the Boast Hand Group, our station visit, fire prevention program, uh, assisted with breast cancer awareness day, uh, helped with the Halloween Trick or Treat Trail, uh, posted Wescout Trick Eighteen Eighty-Nine for assistance on emergency parent dispatch, and for a couple hours open station. And on top of that, we have fire conventionally, where we've assisted every child pre-aided, fifth grade, both schools, for about three thousand kids, but just those. And, uh, so, uh, pretty busy, and, uh, Halloween night, about every other parent came through and said, you're probably gonna have all the stuff coming on with kids and fire detectors and all that, and that's what we want. Uh, our A F G grant, we received, uh, unfortunately, our turned down letter. Uh, we kinda knew it was coming since everything was getting out last month, but finally got the letter this week, or this past week. Uh, said check out the financial aid session, which I always tell you that, thank you, that's too much. Uh, but very few people got grants this year, and the new grant session actually starts in the next couple weeks, so we'll be working on that. Uh, equipment, engine two, as usual, it's had several issues the past month, we're always having to do something with engine two, we go through this engine, uh, it just seems to always have something, whether it's mine or mine that will go out for, out of, uh, service for nine or two, and will get it prepared, and it'll be good for a while, and something else, uh, I don't know, it, uh, always has some type of issue. Uh, we also replaced, uh, purchased replacement booster line for deteriorated line, it was on, uh, brush truck sitting outside, uh, it failed, blast fire, and so the engine's three, so it's getting old. And, uh, so I've, uh, worked, like, replaced the pump for all of that. Uh, other than that, uh, on our station one addition, uh, currently looking at any options, reduce costs, I may have the cost, but to call me and, uh, present what we, what we get, if it's something we think should do. Uh, wanna have the fire department look at first, might as well probably run the cost savings stuff, but, uh, we also want to see what happens to sales tax too. And, and so, we have it in that limbo of, uh, whether they're gonna act up on, you know, if their prices are still gonna be valid or not, even if we wanted something to close the time since they did, so, um, I'll get with the mayor on that, if we do need to call us, have to call me, if they don't consider something to do that, and if you don't, then we'll just move on. But, uh, if you have any questions, talk.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate you. Council forum.
On the auction ledger, uh, Richard, you got the Parks category, that, and I had that Santa House?
Not yet, we're gonna keep that as, as a reserve, unless you're gonna, yeah, we want to keep that just in case the, the new Santa House is not completed on time.
Always gonna be. But, uh, when's the auction?
About nineteen.
Don't keep it?
Right now, I'd like to keep it for four years.
In case you get kicked out at all.
Does that sound, that'd make me money loss.
Uh, any other thoughts or comments on this ledger, or anything? Any other forum, comments, or council?
Mayor, any update on drainage issues since last month we talked about?
Uh, only, we have started it, which is well-known, obviously, uh, not really, we got a couple of issues, and I think Mr. Hamby's still looking into some thought process on how to gain easement and, or extension point blank, did you get my letter of, can I take it to citizens, say, here, we're handling properties?
Pretty good, sir, and we're glad we found you.
Yeah, I mean, we have, we have something written, right?
Uh, we, we, we have, we'll go check it.
We're ready to start, I know I am, I know the citizens ready, I know you guys get calls from citizens. I, I do hope, and I know, I know you have done this, to help out the citizens, some of the citizens that are concerned about the drainage issues, as, as they should be concerned, it affects them and their house and their area. A lot of the, a lot of times, uh, it's not a great place to start, uh, we need to back up a little bit, and, and, and I get bored or old, they get old to me too, that we continue to keep talking about starting somewhere, but yet we don't start, so, we've gotta start somewhere, and we gotta do it soon. Uh, the one, I think, if you're, we're too late without saying, and I'll, I'll try to get started on that, hopefully within next week or so. Unfortunately, it's, it's a bad time of year, it's wet, every time we think we're ready to go trench, if you will, or clean out, uh, it's wet, and you sure don't wanna drive across somebody's yard, so I, I don't know if that's meant to be or not, it's, it's on my mind, for sure. I continue to talk to, uh, the street department, and that's, that's another issue, the street department, trying to divvy those guys up, if you will, and make the best time, or the best use of their time. These are the guys that should be out there on that back over, know what to do, and then those guys that maybe shouldn't be. So, we're trying to make sure we make those right in city, get the right people on, and so. I would, excuse me, I would still invite any, any times a councilman or somebody wants to come down and talk to me, if you're getting called about drainage issues, especially, to come and visit with me, let's look at it, let's get mad. Councilman McDaniel's offered to come down, maybe draw it out, get a plan, really get something down on paper and stuff, so, that answers your question, I did try to work.
Randy Mizell, leave me alone.
Randy Mizell, we actually, I, I hope, I didn't, I know, he, he comes about pretty frequently, and, and he, and he, it's never a hassle, never harassment or anything.
It's all on my guy.
We did, okay, we did remove some debris from just last week, the, the street guys removed some debris, uh, that anticipation of that rain, heavy rain, that we ended up not getting, uh, was gonna cause an issue down there, so, got that debris out. I will say that the, the street department has done a good job of making sandbags available to citizens. I asked Joe to do that a month or two ago, and he's done that, and they continue to replenish that skid, or two or three skids. So, if you ever get a question about sandbags, they're out front of the street department, and they should not get below two skidfuls, I've asked, that never falls lucky. I'll go around with Joe and look at some issues, and we'll find thirty-five to fifty sandbags somewhere that aren't used for that, that a citizen has obtained.
Bunker for hunger.
You can't, yeah, exactly, maybe, maybe develop those, uh, those burners for the shooting, but, uh, they're there, it's sand, well, I think, I think that's our duty to provide that, and I think we'll continue to do that. I got, real quick thing, one is, uh, I got to add to what I think's funny, it may not be anybody, especially at ten thirty, nine thirty-nine, where it is. Uh, we're talking about, uh, the addition to the firehouse, fire station, I think, from the looks of the new Santa House, you could probably park a truck or two in there, so that's a thought, uh, just, just for fun. Uh, early voting starts tomorrow here at City Hall for the extension, the extension, our city sells in Houston, please tell everybody you know who can vote. How are they, how are they feeling, old boy, for it, okay? Uh, next council meeting, due to the parade, we talked about this a little bit, but it will be December the eighth, and you've already said that, December the eighth at seven P M, so. Uh, my congratulations to the city who all did watch sports, volleyball didn't quite get there, but came in second, that's, that's very good. Uh, we're gonna continue on football, and one is driving, so, thank you, everybody, thank you for your patience.
Is that our house on, uh, Main Street?
Oh. Our house on Main Street, Mr. Hamby?
We are in the process, I'm just waiting to get the deed, uh, last month I was told to send a mail. I received a call about two days later, said that they wanted to modify the deed to be equipment deed, said a warranty deed, I ordered two of them, indicated about a week and a half ago that, uh, she was coming in to sign that, and we should have that for this meeting. As of checking my mail this afternoon, I did not have that, this isn't... is a tip off, backseat was far, uh, but, uh, it's, it's coming, it's gonna be here, I'll visit with the mayor, and keep him updated, and the second I have it in hand, I will let him, uh.
Mayor, I just want to say that, uh, Sonny's paper, it was, you know, great, uh, yeah, the tower, it was, uh, be on the front page, Sunday paper, you know, something above, above the crease.
Yeah.
That was great for, yeah, that was, and for Parks Department, or Parks Nation. Yeah, but, Richard, unfortunately, is gonna be the hero soon, because of the clock tower, it's, it's a long time coming, and, and he's worked hard on that, getting all that arranged, and it's, it's gonna be awesome to get to hear the bells, and so, uh, yeah, it's gonna be cool, did you have your?
No.
Yes, you did. You sure? Tell them briefly, like, in two seconds, about junior followers, I think that's cool for the council to know that this is going on, it's not necessarily city, but it's certainly be what, issue has to be.
Well, and after the economic development boot camp, we decided that, um, we needed to get some younger input in the community, kind of as a junior council, but also, um, put them to work as just partners in our nonprofit focus on Greenwood, um, and that it need to be the, the sixth and seventh graders, because they need something positive to go on in their school, something energetic, so, um, we formed that group, and, um, hopefully they'll take on one service project for their own, and then they'll join with the rest of the focus on Greenwood, um, uh, but, uh, because as I explained to them, all the money comes back to their classmates and, and children in their community, so they're, they're on board, they, they're excited, and, um, their first trip to the police department was great, we've got a really good group of kids, um, we have Officer Hobbs, uh, full role in Lily, and we have Will Reed's daughter, and, uh, my daughter, and then, um, there's seventeen others along with them, but, um, they were really excited, they were really excited to hear about Joey's position, and, and working in the lab, and processing evidence, and, um, I'm just gonna get through our, our hour, um, with Joey, but, very excited, and we're excited to get some input from them, um, in that economic development boot camp, and enforcement parks kind of stood up, and that's gonna, you know, how do we, how do we get people excited, and they keep saying that, but there's nothing to do, these young kids say there's nothing to do here, and we, we just put in a water park, and, 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 and the lady kind of went to me, and I said, well, you're gonna have to take it on it, it's gonna be their idea, and they're gonna be a part of it, and they got it on it, and that very next day, the neighbors came over there and put candles in the park, I'm happy, I know a bunch of kids did not put those candles in the park, so, anyway, so we're excited to get them going, and that's our community.
Thank you, Brooke, I, Department has been doing a great job, I'm, I just, and you probably know that, all the Department is doing a good job, Charlotte's there, it's working on its job, people are just working hard and doing things, what they're supposed to do, and so, I, I've got an awesome job, and it's, I would say it's easy, it's very hard, I understand.
I'm assuming you didn't go to detention hall to get your junior kids, my son in the sixth grade?
He, he may not have got the message.
Oh, I didn't want to, I picked the children, and I remember I had a party to Charlie to come and sign up, so I had to do it all.
Maybe we could have another club, I mentored a young man, I say I mentored, it was a young man, I'm gonna tell you what kind of hands Greenwood's in today, there was a young man that showed up, or didn't show up, it was playing, his name was Cameron Keller, eighth grader, uh, from here in Greenwood, he called a month or so ago, and I would promise you, I would not ever believe that that man's in the eighth grade, I thought I was talking to a congressman or somebody on the phone, and he shows up today, and, and he's actually a relative of Greg, which is odd, didn't say it, tell, no, he, he, we invited, he, he was here, I had to have his phone conference today, that he could not partake in, because it was with attorneys from municipal, but Greg took you on a little tour or two, and then he came back, and, and he participated in our director's meeting this morning, and I turned to him several times, and, I mean, speaks a lot better than I do, and lined up a few things, and by the way, I, and I don't know who, I, well, I do know who he got a hold of, who got a hold of, because he was willing, he said, our fire chief really needs that new fire truck for two million dollars, he really needs it bad, so let's try to get that, and he, he spoke, and let's, let's get this done, and I said, well, how would you possibly do that, and he said, I believe the, uh, which? Which was it? The stock market, yeah, but it was certain, I mean, he had a, yeah, the Dow, the Dow was, or something, so he, he was ready to do that, so, pretty sharp kid, not a pretty sharp, very sharp kid, so, lots of good things going on in Greenwood school, I would entertain a motion to dismiss.
I'll make that motion.
Return, and motion, your turn, thank you so much.
Congratulations, such a nice place.